Good evening, everybody. I hope you can hear me above the air, city. But welcome to our July 10, Philly Port. I would like everybody to stand for a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saying one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all things. We have quite a few things on the agenda early on, but we always like to lead off with our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to first invite people to come to my monthly forum, which is going to be Thursday, the 26th of July at 6:00 p.m. No particular topic, just inviting people to come and pick my brains, pick on me, give me ideas, whatever. It's Thursday, July 26th at 6:00 p.m. at Ryan Beck Town Hall. Exciting development. Alan Scher from the Ryan Beck Town Board is working with me and a bunch of people in the town of Clinton, and Christopher Mitchell, who's the director of Community Broadband Networks for the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, and we're working on the issue of broadband. And you might think that in 2018, everybody has access to high-quality, affordable broadband, high-speed, plenty of choice. That's not the case, and certainly not the case in Clinton. I believe it's not the case in Ryan Beck. I don't know what's happening all over the village of Ryan Beck. That's probably going to be one of the topics that I deal with on the 26th. So last night, I circulated the letter. Francine Amparo, Nick Page, and Randy Johnson, the county legislators, signed on to that letter. It's really exciting to me because Chris Mitchell is a nationally-known expert on this issue, and he is preparing a map of Dutchess County, of where the gaps are. But Chris doesn't live in Ryan Beck, so I am going to issue the same call for information and input and feedback to you folks that I did at the Ryan Beck Town Board meeting recently. I would love to know if anybody in this room, whether you're on the board or not, your street, your neighborhood, your road, do you have great broadband, is it high-quality? Do you have plenty of choice, great price, or lacking in all those areas? I really want to get a picture of the village of Ryan Beck, town of Clinton, town of Ryan Beck, and yes, all over Dutchess County. There's lots of different options, to go municipal, halfway municipal, bring in more choices, other providers. Anyway, I'm at 464-2245, and honest to God, I want to know on your street, your road, your neighborhood, and what's going on. If everything's fine, then, you know, if it ain't broke, go fix it, obviously. Check out muni networks.org. That's the Institute for Local Self-Reliance website on this issue, just devoted exclusively to this issue. Muni Networks.org. I've been in touch with Core Logistics. They are a veteran-owned business all over western Massachusetts, and South Haddon, and North Hampton, and a bunch of other municipalities. This veteran, and of course, Dutchess County has declared 2018 the year as a veteran. Core Logistics, a veteran-owned business, is now doing this bike-share program, pedal assist in a lot of ways. It's happening in White Plains, it's happening in Albany, Troy, Saratoga, Schenectady. It's not happening in Dutchess County. About a decade ago, I got a resolution passed for Dutchess County to do it. Still not happening. Last night, I circulated a letter, five other legislators signed on. We're trying to get a resolution passed. I would love to enlist, interest you folks in trying to get a real bike-share program, not just in Poughkeepsie, but you know, Poughkeepsie, Ryan Beckville, Rock Creek, and different parts. Because what they're doing in western Massachusetts, not only not just with Wired West, which may be something you want to pursue, that municipal broadband option, but they're also doing this fabulous pedal assist bike-share thing. There's a lot of cool things in western Massachusetts. I don't think it'd be a bad idea for us to bring here to Dutchess County. A little bit frustrated to see that last night, the county legislature passed a resolution to rescind, a resolution that I passed 10 years ago. That was for the Green Collar Jobs Task Force, the Dutchess Energy Alliance, basically to have a local version of the Cambridge Energy Alliance. The much esteemed solar expert Randolph Horner is here in the room. You guys have done a lot of great work on geothermal, before Poughkeepsie did, you know, facilitating the geothermal village of Ryan Beck. What the Cambridge Energy Alliance is, and was, is basically they're getting solar to people who need it, they're getting free weatherization to low-income households, they're making energy efficiency retrofits and audits happen. That's what they're doing in Cambridge. I found out about it through PPS a decade ago, got the resolution passed. I don't know why, what's going on, that the Dutchess County Legislature, the majority, went out of its way last night to pass a resolution to kill it. That is what happened, just so you know. Also, about the Dutchess Community College budget, there's been some media coverage, the Daily News.com today, and some other stuff. Just so folks are aware, again, $55 million fund balance was just announced a month ago. There was $59 million fund balance announced last year, and of course, the village of Ryan Beck, you guys are not getting here for sure. I continue to advocate on that. Before that $57 million fund balance, there's no reason why they couldn't have added an extra 800 grand, so there'd be no tuition rate. Each year for the last four or five years, there's been only $164, $168 tuition rate. Well, so now, they just approved, unfortunately, to jack it up another $614 compared to what it was four years ago. That doesn't make sense. And Dutchess County is at the bottom of the barrel. If you look at Plumby Green, Orange, Ulster, Rockland, Sullivan, all those other counties have a much higher percentage of their community college funding coming from the county government than we. For instance, Plumby Green counties, over 35% of their funding for their college budget comes from Plumby and Green counties. In Dutchess County, it's less than 23%. I would just gently remind you that we don't have to do single-stream recycling. What does that have to do with anything? A lot of communities all across the country are having a trouble with China now, and now recycling is harder and harder. If we actually diligently did what I and Neil Sullivan did, Institute for Local Self-Reliance, and other zero-waste sword recommending 10 years ago, and really be careful about sword separation, we wouldn't have to do the single stream. We could have recycling, and we wouldn't have 175 tons of nitrogen oxide and 22 tons of volatile organic chemicals coming out of the Dutchess County incinerator every year. That's smoggozo. When you mix the NOx with the VOCs, that's 197 tons of that stuff. And that's why Dutchess County, one of the reasons why Dutchess County air quality is a D. Cricket Valley is going to add another 260 tons. The last thing to wrap us. 5G is rolling out, and a lot of folks, like Randolph, don't, on the other side of the river, are concerned. There's an end run happening in municipalities. I don't know if it's even hit the village of Ryan Beck, but I urge you to go to bioinitiative.org and check out stopsmartmeters.org, because I'm not wearing a tin foil hat. My friends in Ulster County that are experts on this issue aren't wearing tin foil hats. 5G is not going to be extracted. And I've also enlisted the support of the Hudson Valley Area Labor Federation, Community Communication Workers of America, Central Labor Council of Dutchess County, Levin 99 FCIU, Utility Workers of America. We are going to try to have a working-class summer. About half the county can't make ends meet. I was in Poughkeepsie Journal, November 2016 report from United Way. Forty percent of us can't pay our bills. So we're working on project labor agreements. We're trying to get a fair work week, work week law passed, like New York City did. We're trying to get paid sick leave legislation, proposed in Westchester. Ban salary history question, just like we did in last semester. Suffolk County, the executive is making sure, because of this crazy Supreme Court justice issue, the Suffolk County executive just decided to not allow county officials to allow the address on email information, so people can be intimidated. I'm not going to go through the whole long list. I just, I need your help, folks. Thank you for your patience. I'm on 464-2245. I hope to see everybody at the Ryan Beck Town Hall on the 26th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you for letting me go first, so I can run the Clinton Town Board meeting at the same time.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Well, add to your request. We need your help as well. We have a grant application into the county for a lift station to replace our A-Team lift station, wheelchair lift that is here in Village Hall that was installed, I think, 1907, when the building was built, 1972, '73, right?
Absolutely.
Maybe a little later, but anyway, long story short, it's constantly breaking. Parties are now off, we have submitted a grant for a power lift station to go up in the festival area, up on the second floor, and will not hinder access up to the stairwell and everything else. That's a community development block grant package. We would like your help.
I will do it. Can you pass the meeting down?
Absolutely.
Joel Tyner, very quick time.
All right.
I'll get on it. I can't promise results, I will get on it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, please.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing, and the public hearing is on, and at a stop sign on Carolina, over on Wiltrumper, Carolina. So what I'd like to do first is open up the public comment section and the public hearing, and then we'll close them. So if there's anybody here that wants to make a comment, I'd like to make a motion to open the public comment.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose? Thank you. All right. So why don't you read the resolution first, so everybody's aware of what we're talking about. This is resolution, no number yet, 2018. Whereas in attachment amendments to Chapter 109 Vehicle Traffic Code, was introduced by the Board of Trustees of the village of Ryan Beck on June 12, 2018. Whereas the public hearing will be held July 10, today, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at Village Hall, 76 East Market Street, Ryan Beck, New York. Notice of said hearing was duly published, and at which time interested parties had an opportunity to be heard. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the village of Ryan Beck determined the action to be a Type 2 action based on the criteria found in number 6, New York, number something, 6017.5 C-16, and therefore I determined that there are no adverse environmental impacts associated with adoption of this local law. So this is the resolution, addition to Section 190, 109, that's 42, Schedule 8, Stop Intersection on Stop Sign on Directional, a stop sign on Carolina Drive, Wiltrumper Drive North, and Wiltrumper Drive South, at the intersections of Wiltrumper Drive and Carolina Drive. Anybody here with any public comment on the stop sign? Having heard no public comment, I would like to make a motion to close, to close the public comment session.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose? Stay into the public hearing. Again, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018 for the proposed stop signs on Carolina Drive, Wiltrumper Drive, North and South.
Second.
Any discussion from the board in regard to those stop signs?
This is requested, yes.
It is a yes. This is a request of favor number three.
There's going to be three stop signs there?
Yes, there's three. One on Carolina, as it approaches Wiltrumper, and then one north and south on Wiltrumper. Call in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the stop signs.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose? Okay, thank you very much. We have a couple presentations for everybody and for the public. The first presentation is an application by the funding from the Ryan Beck Trails, Winnicke, which would be great to want to give us some data.
The, the, hey, officer, I mean, you may have more than that one.
These are, these are previous documents are received.
Well, I sent by email.
Yes. Oh, I thought it was a form.
Oh, so you may have seen this, so sorry to mention. Okay, so this is a project that we saw last year. We are, you know, we, Winnicke Land Trust, and we're working on building a trail feasibility really doing throughout High Park, Ryan Beck, and Red Brook, and especially the vision of looking for ways to connect communities together, part of our mission, connecting communities and conserving land. So this is a project that stems from, in concept, feasibility study by Chase Engineering last, I think, last year. Last year, you saw this same project, or similar project, where we were looking for approaching during the CFA, the toll, the funding application process to seek funding. This would be from also park recreation, store preservation, park development funding to build the trail. Actually, it would be a trail that would look for a way to connect the village to the Tazamondo Park, and then on ultimately, not at this stage, but ultimately, find ways to connect to the Empire State Trail, which comes across the line of the bridge, goes on north passively and north from there. Kind of bypasses us, but we could here, connect there, if we, you know, ways we can do that. In this case, a lot of the properties, we're talking about our town, our village, in the town and the village, and much of its town owned, there's some private property, one property we have the eastern on, so we're working on it with landlords and working the town and village, looking for a way to do this. This is simply funding that will allow us to construct a trail, design, engineering, and construction. In other words, what you're looking there on the map is conceptual, you know it can work, we've walked it, we've mapped it. It's not the final location of the trail necessarily. It is something we'll have to, also a process for meeting. I mean, for example, we could go over Nantucket Hill to the bridge, so that we'd see, we'd be looking at it, playing words, we'd be looking at it. There's a lot of processing involved here, so this is, this is only, if we can access funding, then we can proceed from there. Without the funding, obviously, we won't go pay for the design and engineering, let alone of the construction. So what we're asking for from you is a resolution from a you that endorses the project. That means that if I'm, it's a requirement by also park recreation, store preservation, for us to even apply for the funding, we need you to be aware that we're approaching that agency for this funding, and that you endorse the project, you endorse, it doesn't mean you're endorsing this route necessarily, you're endorsing the project that we're going to, you know, move forward, design, engineer, and then construct. Once we pass all those hurdles, we can seek her, anything else, to ultimately construct this. So what we hope is that we connect with the, what we're looking at is the idea that we go through the cemetery, and we look at, run things like, look at title search to know that there's nothing restricting the ability of the town, the village, to allow this to happen. Cemetery committee is in very good support of it. And closely to the park, where there already are trails, trails right now are mulling. If we put down a crush film layer and an item four, we create a surface that's better for, you know, blocking, biking, multi-use, and also much less maintenance. Right now, somebody's got a muller, they're making trails in park, for example. This would allow much reduced maintenance, and something that's much more accessible for people in the community, and there's, there's ticks, all kinds of good aspects of this scenario that we can do with. We have, we have the gardens, in the gardens, we have, which is not our property, but we're looking to make this a piece of our property, so important trails that are there. But I can tell you, we also, we'd like to improve, make improvements there, so those trails are more, more accessible, and reduce the dice and takes. Yeah, that kind of thing, so.
So that piece, piece of the gardens is owned by the gardens?
Yes. We do have these, we have an agreement for the engine of the trail. And there are trails there, but we, we'd like to see them maintained in a better way. This would help us do something we're already doing. We also have these on the park, so we also like to find a way to.
Have you secured these, that's connecting those parks, park to the gardens?
We haven't, we haven't yet. There's different options there. We have one in the hospital, which is one property in between, between the park and the gardens. The hospital may not, might not be defined at this stage. If we develop funding, we can revisit it with them, say we have funding that can do this, obviously, with the provision. Otherwise, it is possible to look at an alternate route, that actually goes over town property only, put it down, we'd be following further up, in the west, along the street. So, you know, these are, these are things to design and, and the purpose of criteria of solutions.
So one of my primary questions is, a lot of this is in one town.
Pardon me?
I'm going to turn the air off a second.
Sorry.
Sorry. A lot of this property is in the town, in town of Ryan Beck.
Yes.
And in particular, I've been made aware that they have not endorsed this yet, the town of Ryan Beck.
No, they haven't.
And because of, I don't know what the reason is, Alfred, there, could you help, help me out, help us out here? What, Alan has not jumped on to this as well?
Yes, well, so, so first off, I should say that any project with also park recreation, store preservation, which is different than other agency grants that come up in the CFA process, most, most of the time, there's not this required endorsement by the community. They require it for any municipality in which the project takes place, which is trying to confirm that because we're talking about park development, or park development funding is public money, they want to make sure that the municipalities are aware. So that, therefore, there needs to be a resolution from the town and the village. Well, the town owns the cemetery, and so that means there's an additional aspect to it for them, which means that if something happened to Winnicke Land Trust for some reason, couldn't maintain this in perpetuity, the town would, is saying that, yes, we'd like to see this improvement, and the town would be committing to taking up that responsibility if, you know, if Winnicke couldn't do it. As part of our concern, we need to see a partnership to be able to do this, like we do with many of the things we do with community projects, we work with the village and the town to help maintain these. That's the way it is right now. In fact, what this does is reduce the maintenance for something that large minority exists. In the cemetery, for example, it's actually would be an improvement on the existing dirt road that goes through. So if we had a dirt road, it wouldn't impact, you know, the, you know, the gray stones and so forth.
So their reluctance is.
And likewise.
Their reluctance is on the maintenance piece?
It's, that's part of it, and the other part, I think, is that it is, if it's a park, then there's alienation of the land. If, say the town wanted to sell cemetery for that corridor where the trail is, there would be this restriction on the use of it that would prescribe that it continue to be publicly accessible. And what I'd say is, well, you know, in this community, the master plan for Ryan Beck is looking for a way to connect the community together with trails. This project is totally consistent with that, and what I hope is that the town would want to ensure into the future, by whatever means, that these connectivity could continue to exist. So it's, 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 their concerns are sort of understandable, except, except this is totally consistent with what the town is saying that it wants to do anyway. And again, it means, it may, you know, is, what kind of chance, what's, what are the chances of that being a problem in the future, that there's a trail through the cemetery, and for some reason, the town does not want there to be trail anymore through the cemetery? Or a future owner says, and this would be the case where they, let's say, sold off. So it's, that's, those are the kind of issues, there are really two, two kinds of issues there.
Thanks. I want, just, is there any sort of liability on the village as a result of implementing this trail?
There's not necessarily, I guess I would, well, the only liability could be, since you, you don't own the cemetery, correct?
Correct. We do not.
Do you own any property in the park, or is that?
It's jointly owned, yes.
It's jointly owned, okay. Well, there, the obligation there could be that, that, for the maintenance, in the same way as the town, for the, and, you know, right now, there are trails there, so this would also suggest that there would be an obligation to maintain trails there. If you own the property, the town owns the property is the case, the village owns the property is the case. So this would be something that we would work out with also park recreation, store preservation, to make sure it was correct technically, as we move forward with this project. Part of this also has to do with how, what the design prescribes when we ultimately finish the design. Now, I will tell you that in looking at the boundaries in the park, there actually is a route where it would just be only on the town property, it wouldn't be on those properties, as I remember, based on where the property lines are and where the trail could go.
Do you mean the municipal lines or the property lines?
Yeah, we own the property, though.
Oh, all the property?
No, the line, the line is right there, it's on this map, that red line that goes down.
There's a difference between the municipal boundary and who owns the parcel. We own the parcel.
We're jointly owned, the parcel.
Of the town also, the town property also?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that you were both own all the park.
I'm pretty sure.
I think there's some discussions about some of the older section, but definitely the newer part of the Tazamondo, the town and village are joint, and we have an agreement on that ownership.
Okay. All right. Craig. Well, again, these would be issues to work out, because the crux of it is, if a municipality is publicly owned, then it becomes park. Well, it's already a park. Actually, alienation is not such a problem in the park, because it's already a park, right? So if you understand my meaning?
Yes, yeah, of course.
So that's really not an issue. Issue for alienation and this project really is primarily the cemetery, because it's not a park now, it's a cemetery, but this one, the trail through the park would then become park, not, well, it would have this other layer attribute that was park, even though it's in the cemetery. Does that make sense?
Craig, you're speaking from the boards. I just re-read it very simply, our endorsement to move forward with an application for a grant.
That is what it is.
There's nothing more committing than that.
That's what it is.
Is this, by the way, the CFA round that is the current one, where we're also participating in July 27?
That's right.
That's what you're talking?
That is right.
So we all have about a one in three chance of being successful, which means you have a 66% of not being successful, so this seems like a pretty benign question to me.
Well, I agree, but I, I mean, my, my concern is, in our relationship with the town, that we work together on, on this proposal, you know, make sure there's no issues, and it doesn't make sense for us to sign and them not, not to support it, because then it doesn't do you any good.
Right.
It doesn't accomplish your goal if we endorse it and the town doesn't.
But if they can take our endorsement across the street and ask, and use it as ammunition to get their endorsement.
Well, the town, the town meeting is, was put off until the 16th. I will be at that meeting. I've been working with Warren Lepansky, and he, and I put him in touch with the contact at park recreation, store preservation, here in Sausburg, and so any questions he has, he's been working with them directly to see what the, their concerns might be. It's true, there's, for the village, there's not much risk.
Right.
And even for the town, the fact is, if we got the grant, we're lucky enough to get the grant, we still have to get all, any hurdle we might have, we'll have to get over that hurdle. And, and if we can't, we, we also would not sign the contract, or we wouldn't expend money, you know, if we knew it was a viable project. And we have a match for it, it's two, it's a 50/50 grant. So, you know, Winnicke Land Trust is saying, we're looking for half the money to do this thing from the state, and if the state says yes, we have to go get the other half. The other half could be volunteer labor, inca, it can be various things, the same need to be attached. So none of that is the obligation of town or the village to do that.
As, as we know, Mr. Mayor, from our own experiences, these are pay-for-performance grants, so you're never, if you're so fortunate as to be one of the three to get the half a million dollars that you're asking for, in this case, it's still a pay-for-performance grant. You can't get the funds until you have contracts, engineering, I mean, everything else done, the, the work actually done, and then you're invoicing for a refund.
That's right, it's a reversible grant. If we don't do it right, we're at risk, and we're, so we're stepping up, we're trying to bring some more funding into this community. And we're trying to do something that fits, matches the conscious company, the master plan, and other plans that this, that the community has for connectivity, economic development, I mean, you name it, and plus, this would connect to the Empire State Trail, ultimately. This won't at this stage, but the way to get there. This won't in this stage, but the way to get there is this way. If you want to get to the Empire State Trail, it probably is this way, unless you want the roadways.
So, for total disclosure, the town board did contact me and asked us to wait on our endorsement until they get their questions answered. It was the only, it was their request back to us.
Well, for my part is, however people want to do this, if we don't, um, time is short. I got the 27th, this is when the deadline is. Um, I have a fair amount written, but there are letters of support, but the crux is municipal endorsements, and I need one from both. If I don't have that...
June 27th?
June, July 27th.
I mean, July 27th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's close.
Yeah.
It's not fast, but it is close.
So we don't have another meeting, so.
Has the park weighed in on this as well?
Oh yeah, the parks, well, I'm on the park committee, so Sally Masarello obviously.
What you could, what you can, what we can say is that if, you know, if the town will not endorse this, um, you know, I really can't submit.
Right.
And so you could make a contingent, you could make a contingent resolution, and that may, may suffice, because that's, that'll be the crux, they both do.
Greg, that's exactly what I would like to propose, that we, we do endorse this because this board has consistently been behind this urban development transportation mechanism, and then we endorse it on the contingency of the town?
Yes.
Something that can go forward?
I, I don't understand why the town asked us not to endorse it.
It has all to do with the cemetery, from what I can understand.
But that doesn't affect us.
I understand.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, I don't think it was really appropriate for them to ask us not to do this until they do it.
It's our choice.
Yeah.
Our choice, but without the town, we can't go forward.
No, I get it.
And frankly, you know, I think for both commu, for both municipalities, there's not much of a risk in this, really.
Yeah, I didn't see their...
At the end of the day, and, you know, but I understand the concerns, and I'm trying to address them the best I can. This proposal is, the CFA proposals are many, many questions. Uh, there are a lot of attachments that I have to submit, it's not just like five-page, you know, application or something. It's, it's really an elaborate thing, so it's hard even to present the whole thing to you. And so this is a summary, it says it all, but, um, but...
I think it's great.
I don't have a budget yet, I'm working on the budget, but that, that will be, it kind of comes when you really understand all the parameters.
I mean, I don't know why you'd be against improving trails, so I like the, the concept is, it's real good.
Uh, trustee Trout, the, the town, I mean, oh, you participated actively, aware and supportive of this?
Oh yeah, okay, yes. Sally was on, Sally's on the Winnicke Committee, she was the president until last year when you took over.
Well, I'm, I'm executive director, I should call her my own president.
Executive director.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, she's very aware of this and very supportive of it, the whole, the whole park committee.
I didn't say, I didn't take over anything.
Oh, okay. Sally's right in there. Well, that's what I'm trying to say. She's still there.
It's a great word, yeah, it really, very accurate.
The park committee's very supportive of this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass a resolution, continue it on the, on the town, because we need them to be able to do it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any other discussion? Good.
Okay, well, thank you, and I will be, I'll be before the town board on the 16th, so we'll know more.
If you want one of us there, I'll, I'll be there.
If, um, yes, if that would be possible.
If you need further action, we can probably get together quickly and have, get a quorum and vote on something else.
Okay, well, for now, the, the resolution is, is the primary thing, most needs, and, and from there, right, the proposal, right? So then, next December is when the announcements come.
Perfect.
And then we know whether we got something, you know, active in terms of, you know, a possible, a grant or not in December. And we'll, we'll go from there.
Just while we're here, do you know what the timetable for the greenway, the walkway, it's coming across? Do you know what the timetable for the state is?
For the Empire State?
Empire State Trail, yeah.
They're trying to move very fast, in fact, one reason that they were, one big consideration for them when they decided what the route would be, which I think, as you know, goes over the walkway through Ulster County, back over the Ryimack Bridge, and then goes north, was that they could move fast. That meant largely on publicly owned or mar, or corridors that were already owned by one owner. And so, uh, there are a lot of rail trails in Ulster County that were, were really kind of established and, and ready to go, and so they can pour money into it and get this thing connected, or it's on roadways. So, um, so Duchess County is more complicated, a lot is private ownership. And this, this project that we're talking about here is an example of that, you know, to get, to make a connection from Hyde Park to Ryimack, for example, how, how would you do that? We've been looking into that, but I'll tell you, it's not easy. And maybe it's not even possible, because a lot is private ownership. Even the old Hunter Bush line, the railroad line, is not in one ownership, and, uh, so it's, you know, because of time, reversion back to the property owners, and nobody's gonna, you know, it, it's gonna be a process to, you know, reconnect through those old corridors, and it might not be possible, it's certainly not, you know, not something anybody supports on the, on the communities, or the, especially the private owners. And so, we're looking for ways with this project to kind of start to make the steps toward establishing those kind of connections. But, the government would like to move fast on the Empire State Trail, and it's not gonna be fast in Duchess County, it's true, except over the walkway, over the bridge.
Well, Greg, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I will speak for myself, that I really appreciate the effort that you guys put into the development of connecting communities together via this urban transportation, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and, uh, yeah, it is our mission, so, you know, we're trying to do what it takes, and in perpetuity, that's, we're around for that, you know, conserving land and working in communities, you know...
You're a lucky guy.
...purposes. Yeah, I don't want to be in perpetuity, but somebody will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Anderson Center for Autism. Liz Sizinski?
No, no.
No, no, Liz, I'm sorry, I forget names.
That's all right.
That's right, but you came forward and, and talked to me a few weeks ago...
Yes, sir.
About a community project.
Yes.
And I thought it was exciting, and I wanted to get this in front of the board, the board is under the public.
Okay, I don't know, please, she needs the microphone, but, okay, sure.
Well, for the camera, it helps a lot.
Okay.
We're short girls, so it's, um, done.
Um, my name's Kathleen Marshall, this is my colleague Nancy Osborne, we both work at the Anderson Center for Autism. For those who aren't familiar with Anderson, we're located right down the street, really, um, in Statsburg. We've been around for over 90 years. Uh, we serve about 300 people, um, with special needs, primarily autism, but once again it. Um, we have a school for children with autism, a residential school. We also have adult services that serves about 120 people, give or take. Sure. Um, and the reason we're here is because another portion of Anderson is our consultation department, and for the better part of a few years now, we have been training businesses to be supportive of people with autism and special needs. Um, we're lucky enough to have a grant through Duchess County, um, to be able to do that, and you just got information that tells you more about that, and lists the, uh, the businesses that have been trained. Um, Nancy, I'll let her talk about her idea, she's the idea girl at Anderson. Um, and, um, we've had some, um, some businesses in Ryimack reach out, I think most recently it was the Beakman Arms, um, and we can certainly provide training to them, and Nancy will tell you a little bit more about that. Um, but we have just, um, applied for the Thomas Thompson Grant, some of you may be aware of that grant. Um, it affords about $10,000 to benefit women and children, it's an old, um, grant, uh, in Ryimack and one other, one other town in another state. And so, we've applied for that grant, and we'd like to be able to do something rather innovative, and we shared that information with your mayor, and he asked us to come here and talk about it. So Nancy's gonna share the idea.
Okay, um, it's really a pleasure, can you hear me? Uh, a pleasure to be here. This is a endeavor that's really near and dear to my heart, so I have to kind of backtrack for a moment and kind of give you the history of how we ended up here, and how we ended up doing this autism-supportive environment. As part of our consultation arm of Anderson, we not only provide support in our local public schools, and we are here in your neighborhood, in your public schools, keeping children in school, we also provide support in the home environment, and it's from those experiences that this whole project has kind of bubbled up. What we've seen behind the front door of many, many houses would shock and surprise many of you. Um, it certainly did for me, um, being back there and getting to see what it's really like to be a family with an individual with autism, and the things that you and I take for granted every day, going out to dinner as a family, going shopping, enjoying our parks and our trails, doesn't happen for these folks. The simple act of running to the grocery store is not a simple act of running to the grocery store. It's a whole endeavor, it's a project, it's planning, and even with all this planning and getting everything right down to a T, we can go to the grocery store, and my child is having a temper tantrum or a meltdown in the middle of the grocery store, and I'm going home without my groceries. So, hearing these stories over and over again and experiencing this isolation with these families, we kind of came back to the tailors of what can we do about this? How do we help our communities become really aware of what these issues are and who these folks are? Because they're living with us, and how can we kind of open our doors and make these experiences a little bit easier for these families? So, out of that grew the Autism Supportive Environment Program. And we offer support and training to area businesses, organizations, we've done governments, um, agencies, we've done law enforcement, we did, um, hospital, doctors' offices, to go beyond awareness and take it to the next level. Where now we're doing something about it. We all know that the diagnoses and the numbers are increasing on a regular basis. They just increased again to 1 in 59. That's something we all need to take into consideration, we all need to think about the impact for each and every one of us now and in the future, and for these children who are being diagnosed. How are they gonna be included in our communities? So it's, again, we've kind of gone out there and done all of this training, and we want to take it to another level. And our next thought was, how do we become an autism-supportive community? Not just one business here, one business there, one organization, but a community endeavor. So through this grant, we said, well, let's look at this money, because this grant funding is for one community. So perhaps this community wants to be the very first one to be an autism-supportive community. Now, we have an idea on how this might happen, because again, the funding is $10,000 if we receive it. Um, so we're like, how do we get, how do we make this happen? So what the thought process is, and what we discussed with the mayor, is creating a small task force or work group of constituents who would be very involved and kind of representative of the community to plan together on how to launch this as a community endeavor. The thought we have is to try to get the word out to all of your businesses and organizations in your community, and get folks to pledge to do one thing differently, to make one change that takes them from just awareness to a step to inclusion, and we would provide the support for that. We would provide the ideas, because, as she said, I'm the idea girl, um, on what they might do. It might be, they're gonna pledge to get their staff trained, we would do that training. It might be that they want to create a sensory-friendly hour, or a sensory-friendly time in their business. We can support that. They may decide to put together some visual supports. We've worked with many businesses that put together kind of a social story, and they put it on their website, they have, um, copies available for folks to help plan for the trip. So, we've done it with libraries. Um, how do you go to the library? Who are you going to see at the library? How do you behave in the library? What happens in the library? And that's available for folks to kind of download and copy and prep for that trip to the library. So someone might want to do something on that, and we would come in and we would support that. We would use that funding to support those endeavors and to support the launching of this program. So, we're here tonight to, to kind of sell this to you, and to get you on board with us. The mayor's already, um, you know, kind of said to us, yep, I'm in, um, we've applied for the grant, um, but we want all of your support, and we're really looking for the board to commit to being the first community in Duchess County to be able to say, you are an autism-supportive community. So, we're asking for your support. Anybody have any questions? I'd be happy to answer anything.
I'm just curious, who you see as being on the, the committee?
Um, I certainly think that we need some local officials on the committee. I would love to see a family representative, and someone, you know, from the business community, perhaps somebody from the school, um, someone from the religious community as well, to get kind of a representative, but small group, because it's a group, if it gets too large, it gets a little bit cumbersome to get to where we need to get to. But a small work group, um, that's representative of your community, and we would ask your support in helping us kind of figure out who those members might be. Um, we have been in contact with Claudia Cooley from the chamber, um, she has approached us actually about doing just this. So she's already familiar and on board with us in this endeavor. Any other question?
Any questions from the board as well, any other questions?
Do we have a resolution?
No, not yet. What, what we have so far is a conditional letter of approval based on acceptance of the board. So, there was a timeline, a very short timeline, so it was a, it was a conditional letter, but we really need to get a board, passing board resolution to be in full support of their application and then the village involvement. So, is, that's when we need to move forward, I guess.
But we're not ready for that tonight?
No, we can do it tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we can.
So, uh, those would be the two items that we would be specifically supporting. Um, we would be giving the equivalent of a, a letter of support...
Yes.
For your application.
Correct.
Which seems very reasonable. Uh, and that the village, because we can only really speak for the village, would be in support of this, should it move forward. So you're not expecting us to speak on behalf of the business community or the spiritual community?
No, just one of us.
Just us, and, and our willingness to participate, uh, in whatever way we can, to, you know, help make, help move this project forward to make it a village center.
I'm trying to get a figure of passing a resolution along those lines, I forgot how to word it.
Right, right. That's why I asked if we're ready to do this resolution.
Let's see. It's a resolution to, what's mine would be support or endorse the, um, is your organization looking for literally a letter of support, you know, perhaps...
Yes.
For the mayor, uh, the trustees, to, to yourselves?
Yes, correct.
That's, that's kind of easy, it's the other one. All right, I would say, so the, kind of quick, maybe, okay, let's see, so, which on, I see. Go and see their letter, what else? Yes. Move that we, um, support the Anderson Center application for, I was talking this out before I actually did this, I'm not...
I'm right, is it?
Yeah, I mean, this was for the Anderson Centers for Autism Grant Application to the Thomas Thompson Trust, and the board pledges to work towards becoming an autism-supportive community with, um, uh, you know, I guess that's it.
Just look over there. I'm for Duchess County.
Excuse me.
Support the Autism Supportive Environment Program.
Okay.
Right, that's what it is, I guess, eh?
Yes.
That was right.
Okay, so, I move that the, I move that the board, um, supports the Anderson Center for Autism in their application to the Thomas Thompson Trust, uh, and that we pledge to, uh, support becoming an autism-supportive community, um, along the lines of the autism-supportive environment, which the Anderson Center has pioneered.
How's that?
Very hard.
Okay. Can we play that back on the tape? Can we play that back on the tape?
I got close on it. You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is going to be great endeavor. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Okay, now we're into the public comment session. Before we get started, I have one public comment that I would like to make, and that's on July 4th, one of our police officers, Dan Alberg, was working at home and had a trauma incident where he fell off of a ladder and was severely injured and was transferred to Westchester Hospital for surgery. Essentially, what he did was he drove his hip bone right up through the socket and smashed his, and smashed his socket. I've spoken to Dan several times. Surgery was completed the other day. They were able to Humpty Dumpty, put him back together again. And the surgery was very successful. He has a very long recovery period. So being that Dan has been, I think, what, 28 years? I'm just guessing right now, a long time.
That's a guess.
Yeah, second guess. A long time police officer for the village. I would just like everybody to wish him well during this long recovery process and we give him whatever assistance we can to Officer Alberg because as a valuable police officer for the village. So thank you. Any other public comment? I hope you would like to.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor and Board, Colonel Plurk, Randolph Horner. I've come over from Woodstock to speak to an issue of regional concern and regional opportunity. And having reviewed your agenda for tonight, I think I should state it as briefly as possible and ask the board if they would support my interaction with the mayor. Briefly stated already, the mayor, as I understand, serves as chair of the Hudson Seven, the seven communities concerned with the water withdrawal. Is that proper? Is that right? So to give a brief recounting, we have a river that doesn't flow like a raging torrent from Troy down to the New York Harbor. This is an arm of the sea. It's an estuary. So it's a tidal pool. So we have effluent from the wastewater plants that enters this tidal pool. And unlike the canals of Venice, it doesn't get swept out altogether. Fortunately, there are many, many billions, if not trillions, of gallons of water in the tidal pool. There are five water intakes serving the seven municipal entities that are in the Hudson Coalition of Drinking Water Communities. I have discovered that the Environmental Protection Agency has a special fund, a water infrastructure fund called WIFIA. And WIFIA has never been accessed by our excellent state agencies, the Environmental Facilities Corporation advised by the Department of Health. Just hasn't happened. One reason is because we have a very well-funded environmental facilities corporation. And more funds have been pledged from state and federal sources for the EFC's work. It occurs to me, though, that by addressing the combined sewer overflows and the other wastewater treatment plant needed upgrades will remove some of the things which make the water quality less than desirable and also affect everything else in this tidal pool from Kingston and Rhinebeck down to Poughkeepsie. My view is that combining an approach to ameliorating the wastewater issues, the discharges, with improving the infrastructure for the drinking water, not just intake, but treatment and distribution constitutes a demonstration of national significance. And WIFIA must be about regional and national significance. It's for big ticket items. To give an extreme example, the state of Indiana has decided that it would combine a number of municipal needs for a $436 million WIFIA program. My back-of-the-envelope calculation is that we might seek to match $40 million of WIFIA participation with appropriate state clean water fund and drinking water revolving fund inputs. So the catch is that I, as a volunteer, have got to work really hard because WIFIA letters of interest must be submitted in sufficiently complete form by the last day of this month. I'm just a few days behind what you heard from Greg Schwanze. I'm willing to do the heavy lift without asking for consulting fees because I'm really concerned about getting a toehold on EPA and other federal funding. Could it also lead to some grants in addition to this particular contribution to low interest rate loans? I'm willing to make the effort with the support of the seven municipalities and I've also reached out to Kingston. Kingston gets its drinking water from the Minkhala Catchment just up the road from where I live in Woodstock. I have a well at my house. So I'm thinking in terms of the region and its health, its economic prospects, and setting a standard for statewide action on a regional basis. So thank you for the opportunity to come during the comment period. I'm not on the agenda, so I should now pass over to the board the sense that each one of the municipalities that would be the constituents of this regional approach needs a 22-page format filled in. A lot of the information could be supplied to me by the village. I'm willing to take the guidance offered by EPA. You always tell the grant giver, or in this case, the lender, what they want to hear. And they fill up this 22-page format with helpful suggestions about anywhere's bill, water, this, that, and the other. And so I'm willing to do that eight or 10 times because once you get in the motion of it, it's not that hard to go from one to the other, and we're talking about a commonality of purpose, Riverkeeper has done a tremendous job motivated largely by the perceived threat, which I completely agree with, of excessive anchoragees and spills. But this is a persistent problem that only gets worse year on year. Kingston, I would like to see join in this effort, even though it gets its drinking water from Woodstock. And the idea is Kingston has some very stringent new requirements imposed by the Department of Environmental Conservation for upgrading its wastewater plant, which it shares with Asofas. So Asofas, on the other hand, you know, drinks out of the section of the river that's right around the corner from the Rondell where the Kingston Outfall exists. So I'm urging Kingston to take advantage of building inputs into the capital stack and doing more than merely comply. At the lower end, it's a matter of Poughkeepsie is, both the town and the city are members of the coalition, and we also have substantial discharges all the way down the line. So that's my offer to serve as a volunteer to meet this deadline. I can only do it with your interest and support. And I will go from here to Asofas where I've been active in the past and see if they feel about it the same way I do. So thank you for the opportunity to address the board. And I don't think in public comment it's appropriate to ask for a resolution. However, if you don't have another placehold to meet, I would note that earlier in your deliberations, you talked about the fact that you could reach a quorum in terms of the parks and trails issue. And I would ask the mayor and your leadership of the coalition, if we are approaching some point where you feel that it's appropriate to have a resolution in support of the submission of a letter of interest, then I would ask if we could accommodate that. But for now, my task, having come before you, is to access some of the specifics of the Village of Rhinebeck to put into the format.
So are you, are you talking to us in our capacity as folks who use source water from the river or as folks who discharge effluent into the river from our wastewater plant? Because we have a newer, not new, but a newer facility.
The whole concept I've shared with you is there should be a comprehensive plan for this, what in old-fashioned parlance we call this reach of the river. From Kingston and Rhinebeck all the way down to Poughkeepsie is the tidal pool that is a concern to me for demonstration purposes. So we would aggregate such information as can professionally and carefully be done. I will tell you that I've reached into very high levels in terms of bipartisan support. So it's not a blue state asking for something special from the government. Where these programs are managed is at the career professional level in EPA. And EPA only has to get the money from Congress in terms of appropriations to cover a very small percentage of potential default. And the Congress doesn't have to appropriate, this is a mystery to me, don't ask me to explain it, it's there. The Congress appropriates some tens of billions of dollars to cover a default, which apparently has never happened, and that potentiates billions of dollars worth of funding. Now, it's a slow process. After these letters are put in, it'll be 60 or 90 days before an invitation comes back to submit a full dress application. There's work there. And the work incumbent in that process is going to have to be loaded into the project budget. I'm just willing, as the author of this concept, to put myself where my concept is and offer to do the legwork, at least to get us an access to eligibility.
Are you looking for six or seven letters from the Hudson Seven?
I'm getting seven letters. I'm asking for Kingston, that makes eight. And then together, we need to amalgamate these and we need to create a vehicle which speaks as one voice for all the participants.
And all that has to be done in the next 15 business days?
In the next three calendar weeks. It has to be done by the last day of the month. But I'm willing to make a wholehearted effort because I believe in the concept.
Do you have any letters from the other municipalities?
Well, I will do in the next several days.
I just was wondering if you had a sample? I don't know.
The sample, the sample letter, I'm going to send the mayor, a, literally a link. And I find it very reassuring that in a number of these questions, they kind of tell you what they want to hear. But the answers have got to be specific and not generic.
Does the letter 22 pages?
The format is 22 pages long in a Microsoft Doc, okay? So what I need to do, if we're interested in my putting forth the effort, what we need to do is resolve that I will work with the mayor and village staff to access the answers to the questions that are specific and we'll create appropriate answers to many of the other questions. And these letters of interest will be amalgamated as one application. They will be components of one master application. But if you feel comfortable with the fact that I'm willing to do all the work, at the end of the day, that's why I said, hearing what you said about possibly gathering a quorum toward the end of the month for Grand CFA, it may be necessary for me to do this work and then for there to be some mechanism of your reviewing the document and saying, yes, we're fine with this, add it to the others. This happens to be, besides the fact that I had a meeting with the Conservation Advisory Commission, whom I know quite well in Kingston, and then I dashed over here for this, and then I have a longstanding relationship with Asofas, so I'll go down to Asofas and tag the last of their meeting. I will be in Poughkeepsie tomorrow for several meetings and I intend to engage the city, if not the city and the town government, and with the same introduction that I've given to you. I'm sorry it's so long-winded, it's an exciting concept to me.
It's just that, I don't know if you want us, you have questions about our infrastructure? I mean, our effluent is supposed to be drop-friendly by the time it goes into a feeder for the landsman kill.
I'm delighted that that's true.
I presume it does. So are you asking us to pitch for infrastructure repairs, make it cleaner, or are you asking us to?
I'm suggesting that if this is not one of the problem outfalls?
It's not.
We'll simply.
That's what I'm trying to say.
The letter from this municipality will say what's good.
Okay, I see what you mean.
However, on the other hand, Dan Chapley was, you know, in Albany, talking to the EFC yesterday about one thing and another. And I've known Dan for a long time since he wrote regularly for the Poughkeepsie paper. And then he's done other things. He used to live in Asofas, he now lives in Rhinebeck. And he's a very, very fine water quality director for Riverkeeper. And I dare say that he's had a lot of interplay with all the drinking water withdrawing communities. I haven't spoken to him since late yesterday. So I told him I was going to go to each municipality. And I didn't ask him to come along because I was just going to do a touch and go and I've already chewed up, what, 15 or 18 minutes? So you've got a long agenda. I welcome any questions.
I do, I do have questions. Under, you said the letters would be amalgamated, put together. Under whose authority is this amalgamated pile of letters going out under? And who receives the response?
I, I'm not entirely certain how we'll pull that together. If I have a pile of letters and a concept, I'll go back to the EFC and tell them, this is what Indiana's doing, you know, you ought to take this on. I'll have an ongoing discussion with Paul Goulet and maybe some of his board members about Riverkeeper. I'm more concerned about touching everybody who's a potential constituent and getting this process underway. I do a lot of very, very large projects in the ultra-cap solar business, brownfields only. I will never touch a single inch of farm fields. And I'd like all the scoundrels who are eating up our farms to be told to go back to the brownfields, but that's another question for another day. So all I can say is if you're interested in being in the club, I'll do everything I can to keep you informed through the mayor and the clerk via email and see what we can do.
We just saw, let me add some comment to it because as the chair for the initial agreement between the Council of Water Association, we did discuss this and we felt that the deadline was too close for us to pull together a collective voice to make this really a feasible application because of the deadlines. It wasn't that we were not interested, the council was highly interested in, just because it is a protection of our waterway, and that's really what we're getting for, is protecting that estuary that feeds, but we didn't feel there was enough time. So the council, at our last meeting, said, we need to hold off on this one because we just can't make the deadline to make, to make it happen. Because that is the voice that I think Randolph needs. He needs that voice of the Hudson Seven to really carry us forward because we've made great progress, but we weren't, we weren't ready. May 30th was our, when we signed the agreement.
Previously, when you signed the agreement on May 30th, July the 6th was the deadline. And here's what I've offered. EPA, before the change of administrators, EPA extended the deadline. Now, in my life and practice, when I see an agency extend funding deadlines, that's because what they hear out in the hinterlands is there are not that many applicants. Why else do you extend the deadline? So you may have been facing what was indeed a statutory deadline for letters of interest.
I think we were looking at, to July 27th, I think.
July 31st.
Whatever.
Okay. It was, it was extended, in any event, if you're telling me kindly that there's not enough time for us to assemble this, all well and good, but I... But I'm so in love with the concept that I'm willing to run around and get all the information together and see what we can make happen. But if you think...
I'm not saying that the village can't participate if they want, if the boards don't choose us to want to work together to pull this letter together. All I'm saying is that the voice, which is really important, is the Interstitial Council, which is the Hudson Seven, will not be able to act on it in time to make it happen. That's all.
But if it gets everybody else, all the other municipalities, to act on it, would that be sufficient for you?
Well, they have to be amalgamated and put together, and somebody has to represent. It really has to go forward as one, not seven individuals. That's how, that's what a bang for the dollar is.
Oh, mayor, I'm a big boy. And so you can't hurt my feelings. But if we want to work on these things and seek a solution, there may be, it may be that I can prevail at the EFC.
I'm going to leave it up to the board.
Yeah, the counterpart of the EFC in Indiana, instead of turning their nose up to the EPA, went for four hundred and thirty-six million dollars. I think because we've had historically a reasonably well-funded environmental facilities corporation, I'm going to say this very carefully, we're being recorded, but there's no offense in this, I think they're in a silo, I think their thinking is siloed. And when we say, you know, let's get engaged with the EPA, who knows? Next year, there may be twice as much funding, there may be three times as much funding. We need a pilot.
What would the board like to do? I'd have to see more, I know what we're agreeing to. It's so fuzzy, I'm sorry, but it's been twenty minutes of fuzziness, I need to see something.
I'm offering, I'm offering without financial compensation to take information from this community and insert it, plug it into this format. And I'm offering to do that eight times in the days ahead and see if I can prevail upon the EFC, or if Riverkeeper can prevail upon the EFC, if somebody can make this effort worthwhile. Because I think we should be engaged in this concept now, rather than waiting for the future.
Reynolds, I'm not trying to be rude.
You can't hurt my feelings, I'm sorry.
How, if you had to estimate, how many hours of village clerk's time would you need?
I may not need any of the village clerk's time.
We're going to. There's a page, there is documentation that has to come out of our water department, our wastewater department, to be able to put this together. We have not seen document to be able to sign that. If you want to send us the document, and then we can make a decision.
You could email the mayor.
Yes.
I would just say, send me the document. And then we will respond, how's that?
That's good.
Is that favorable?
I'm going to say for the last time, I appreciate your caution in deliberating upon anything, particularly because we don't have excellent amount of time fully to empower the Hudson Seven to act as a seeker of funding and a collaborative entity that stands alone.
Thank you, Reynolds, I appreciate your time.
One quick thing. So as Brandt said, our wastewater department's in good shape, but our water department needs some infrastructure work. Could we use some of this money, if granted, for water infrastructure?
That would be the whole point of...
It's not bad, not bad, Grant.
We're pursuing that avenue, it's the same...
I know we are.
No, it's not, mayor, this isn't, anything having to do with water is the subject of the EPA funding. It just has got to be big enough to cross a threshold, so...
We'd have to get a lot of them together to say, here's the collective way to improve our everything. Send us a link, Reynolds, and we'll appreciate it.
Thank you, I know you've got a long agenda, and thanks for your...
Thank you.
And thanks for your interested questions.
Thank you. It sounds like you've got something there, but we need to kind of flesh out. There seems to be a lot of unanswered questions.
I'm not intimidated by filling out the form. I've been doing this stuff for a long time, but mostly the clean energy business. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, treasurer's report. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sidetracked, public input, probably common, I apologize. Yes, I apologize, got sidetracked.
This is going to be a piece of cake.
I don't think we've ever met before.
I promised. My name's Donna Warner, twenty-three Bean Street, and I'm here simply to do a quick follow-up from yesterday's workshop on short-term rentals. I'm not going to read the letter that Linda Stanley read yesterday. I just wanted to read into the record that a group of residents did submit a letter. The residents who are concerned with the short-term rental codes. And we, in the letter, propose a number of provisions that we would like the board to consider as the deliberations proceed. I just want to mention quickly what they are. And then I want to thank, and I'm going to thank all of you for a wonderful meeting last night where we got to have an opportunity to dialogue and to begin to build consensus around these. And I'm sure Grant will be making some kind of a report later today.
I'll need to work with you on that.
And I just want to say, I personally volunteered, not respect to content, but to support Brandt administratively, to help with any kind of project plan or spreadsheets or whatever that might be needed. And I'd be happy to do that. The points that, and I sent you an email in that regard.
Yeah, thanks.
And I know sometimes Excel spreadsheets and all of that are just a mystery, you know, or difficult and challenging, but not to me. I just wanted to mention, our concerns were that the SPRs be allowed only in principal village residence of private owners, recognized and treated as a business, require owners to be present throughout guest stays, require a detailed application and enforcement plan. Almost all of those things have been addressed or are being addressed. So again, thank you very much for really hearing all of us, many, many people last night. Thank you. And the last thing I want to say is, I did send a letter to our Mark Pollinaro in support of the lift. Because I had an opportunity to see it in action last night. And I sent a little synopsis of what it looks like when that lift is in operation and how awkward it is. So I hope that the village receives it. I just want to give copies to the other letter, thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Sit down. How are you, I'd love to over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Hi, I just, I have a couple of questions that were brought up, just talking to neighbors as always. So Susannah, Rindig, Old Man Road. One thing that I wanted to ask about was, what is the criteria for the paving projects? Because there's some really crazy potholes that we were talking about and we were wondering, what is the criteria when you...
Basically, the county put together this, ranked all of Reinbeck's streets. They actually had a group of people go through and rank our streets basically from sixty to ninety-something, which is the possible score. And we've based our paving cycle on starting with the worst, the streets that are worst first. So I can share it later, I can share the spreadsheet with you. You can see how the various roads are ranked. So that's the first thing we use. The second issue that we have is that there is, hopefully, one day soon, it's going to be a fairly large water infrastructure project that's going to tear up Chestnut, Livingston, parts of Route Nine. Part of Mulberry Plant. So we have, even though some of those roads are not in great shape, we've pushed aside the paving of them with the idea that at some point, hopefully in this near future, we're going to be digging them up, putting in new water pipes. And when we do that, then it'll be time to repave. But we didn't want to pave and then tear that fresh pavement back up. So that's basically the criteria.
There was also input from our highway department and W. Mayor Lewitt as being the liaison to highway department review of all of that data to formulate tools.
I was just curious. When you're driving down South Road, for example, there's a pothole there that my little low car doesn't really look very much, so we're just curious.
More on banner.
You're talking about individual potholes, right, not all street paved?
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I was just wondering what the criteria was in general of what made the determinations of what roads are paved. Because it seemed to me, some of the major roads that are more, connecting roads, for example, I think of like Arnett, which a lot of people drive down to get to the high school. There's quite a few places that need to be patched there. And then I know Violet, when I was walking up here, I saw Violet Place was getting done, which just doesn't really connect anything. So I was just wondering what the criteria was, I was just curious about that.
The other thing is that...
I'm not trying to be critical.
It's a, I would just say two other things, so I understand what's going on. We have the funds to pave approximately three-quarters of a mile a year, plus or minus. So that's our goal, and that's a reasonable replacement cycle. And the other thing is that the milling of two roads to be paved started today. They're going to be paved, hopefully, by the town starting on Monday, that's the schedule. And after that, I was talking to the head of the highway department, they will then start cold patching, which is basically filling in the potholes. So I know that that's on their schedule of things to do and address. So it may not be that we can pave the entire road, but I know that getting the cold patch out is the next, cold patch out is the next...
I get it, it was just a criteria, what the criteria was. My next question, you were talking about the streetlights in the last meeting. And I've noticed a lot lately, a lot of the streetlights are blinking a lot more in the town. Is that something that you're just leaving for now because you're looking at these new streetlights? Or like, they're going out completely, there's one right near your house, actually, that goes out all the time.
Can I say something? Any citizen can call Central Hudson and tell bars, and they'll fix it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask about.
That's central.
That's their responsibility.
Okay. It's actually on their website, if you go to their website, it has, you can click on a link that says... To put in places where that's happening? Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was something that was being sort of left alone because of this new streetlight project that you were doing. So that was also a possibility, so we'll go face those streetlights. My last question was just, again, talking to people about the brush that's, you know, the brush pickup. And some people got the files because they had it out at the wrong time. And how are you disseminating that information to, like, new people who move into the village? Or how does that get put out, like, what dates?
The brush pickups go?
Yeah.
Good question, because we tried diligently to not only put this out repeatedly, we put it, it's on our website. We've sent out various email blasts specifically related to it. So for people who are signed up on our email distribution list, will get this. We have a Facebook notification page as well, in terms of trying to get that word out. And at our public meeting, and so at ANDA, which is a valuable resource, this has been discussed here on tape. We're using every media act that's available to us to use. And I really truly understand that not everybody does get the message. But we're working hard at trying to communicate our...
At one point, I got a mail, like, I have a purple piece of paper that must have been mailed to me. I don't know if you remember, Pat?
Yeah, it was coming years ago.
Yeah, it's still, you know, I put it up on my...
Yep, we did that, I think it was last year.
I think it was last year, I think you passed the resolution. Yeah, that might have been, yeah, that's on the right. So, yeah, I was just curious about, for people, new people moving in, how does that information get to some of the...
And if you have any ideas, we're delighted to take on how to better disseminate the information.
I will think about that, but missing.
We look forward to your help.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Vanessa Bertozzi, twenty-five Storetini Drive. I just want to say thank you for approving the stop signs in my neighborhood at Carolina Mill Trumper. Thank you for keeping the children safe. So many cute little kids in that neighborhood, including my two boys. So thank you very much. And also in regards to the brush pickup, I'm fairly new. And I didn't know that you couldn't just leave it there at the curb. So maybe when you send out the notifications, not just about the schedule, but also say to folks, only put the brush there the day before the pickup, or else it may be fine. Because I wasn't aware, I couldn't just like store my brush on the street, sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who can comment? Okay, moving forward now.
Okay, the treasurer's report is for the period ending June thirtieth. The tax collector's account ended the month with one million, three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. This was our month to collect the majority of our taxes. The general fund ended the month with a hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. The water fund ended the month with four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and six cents. And the super fund ended the month with three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents. The vouchers presented for payment in the general fund totaled sixty-six thousand, eight forty-eight, ninety-three. In the water fund, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. In the super fund, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. We have one payment to make for the Legion Park Black Grant in the amount of four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And we have an escrow bill in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. An operating statement is provided for the expenditures and revenues through July tenth. The water and wastewater, the billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed out by the water and wastewater department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
I make a motion to accept the wastewater adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Thank you.
I move that we accept the water adjustments as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, staying? Thank you.
And I'd also like to just report that the records management grant, we received nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And that is fifty percent of the records management grant that was awarded. The budget amendments...
Good to give a call-out to our village clerk for maybe that, that's pretty amazing.
It's kind of unique in that they are funding it prior to spending it, so that's so, it's pretty good. So the budget amendments, I have two budget amendments. One is just a decrease in the general fund cash and an increase to the capital project fund for that four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And then a budget amendment to decrease the nineteen ninety oh four contingency line item and increase the fourteen forty oh four engineering line item by eight thousand dollars for some unanticipated expenses for the new village hall lift options and grant preparation.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the amendments. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, staying?
Karen.
And finally, I would just like to report that for the fiscal year ending twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the year in close is in progress.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, police in court? One second. This is for the month of June. Total number of incidents in the town was thirty-nine. Total number of incidents in the village, one hundred and thirty-one. Total number of tickets in the town was eleven. Total number of tickets in the village was eighty-two. Total arrests, five, and total number of accidents, seven. No other reports available for the police report. Moving on to fire department. Fire department report for the month of June, for the month of May, excuse me, there were 28, it said May, but it should be June. For the month of June 2018, there were a total of 101 alarms for the fire department. 22 of them were fires, 73 EMS and six motor vehicle accidents, respectfully submitted by Kyle Hammy, Fire Department Chief, and Chrissy Amy, EMS Captain. Building planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, let me read these numbers, some revenue numbers into the record and then we'll just go through a couple of items that we have. For the month of June, we added building department CL municipal search fees of $950, building permit fees of $1,536,15. And planning board fees and approvals of $875, the total of $3,361.15. So a couple of things that we want to cover. I'll start with two items that zoning enforcement officer Fenton provided to our village clerk who shared with me this evening. One is the discussion, and I'm not sure if this is a recommendation or just a discussion point, for a four-way stop sign at Parsonage and South Street.
That's, that's what I know. That he wanted to bring it to the board's attention that he wanted to, I guess, look into a four-way stop sign there.
This is the intersection light.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First, I, we have, as board, we have discussed this before. I know we had communicated about it. I happen to think it's a good idea. I feel that looking light is a bit confusing.
So there are some changes going on there as we speak. We had a previous meeting, board meeting a while ago, there was a letter from a concerned citizen about, about that intersection. And our chief police sergeant Dunn had offered the ability to get a study done of that intersection and he was hoping to be able to do that. He did submit a request for the study. A study was denied and we were not able to. But they did pass on a recommendation and a recommendation that they put through is that through traffic on Parsonage, on the, on the South Street, Parsonage Street side doesn't stop. So in other words, so backing up. The recommendation also from our police department was that putting a stop sign, a four-way stop sign there, especially during school traffic time, was, they did not think highly of, only from a standpoint that it backs traffic up if you're coming off of Market Street and approaching Parsonage to head toward the schools. Buses now gets backed up onto East Market Street. A lot of car traffic gets backed up and they're concerned that that would create a traffic hazard if we were to put a four-way stop sign there.
I think the right thing is, an old fantasy to our village clerk, these are items that are important to us, zoning enforcement officer, and so they're important to us. I, I'll take it upon myself to discuss both these items in greater detail with Mr. Fenton because I don't, I don't know anything more than what I'm sharing tonight.
I would ask you to also talk to Sergeant Dunn as a result because there, because of the recommendation and the study that he had asked.
So the other item that John, Mr. Fenton, brought upon, Pat, had us discuss tonight, clearly is related to yesterday evening's star discussion, which is, I think, and Pat will help me out here again, that John feels it's quite capable in developing a special type of permit application that would be required of individuals seeking a short-term rental, presumably unhoused, and that he was, would be relying on Pat, on our village clerk for some of the administrative support behind that. Again, I commit to the board tonight, if I, I'm just learning of these items and they're both important items, that I'll speak in greater detail with John and obviously update the board as the mayor. But, Pat, is there anything further that?
Yeah, I was just pulling up John's text to me. His request is that the board allow me to assist him in the permitting process of short-term rentals.
Brent, you're really the maze on to the committee in terms of doing that.
John's mentioned that to me before, right? I think it just, it's a question of how busy Pat is, which we know is she's really busy.
Other times are, I think any project, once you get it kind of organized and formulated, that it's the setup part that's the hardest part. And then once it's done, then you have a system. And once the system's in place, it makes it a lot easier. And I'm pretty good with systems.
Okay. Well, let's, you know, we need to get, he's going to give us a draft of an application.
I presume, yes.
I think he just wanted to have the board's support that it's okay that I work with on this.
That's good.
No, I think, there is a lot, as Christine O'Hara mentioned, there's a lot of demand on our village clerk.
Right.
And we're now into a phase where hopefully we're, we have a grant approved that's going to take a lot of time. And a lot of the village clerk's spare time to be able to implement. So I think time is critical and I'm not sure what the timeframe is for doing some of this and how much.
Well, you know, the also, the presumption is that Ryan's really busy already and I think he is, you know.
And Ryan's on a shorter term.
Right. We can't just give him more hours without running follow the civil service.
Correct. So I'm, we had discussed this between ourselves and I was perfectly fine with it.
Okay.
Done deal.
We haven't decided on the final, on the final short-term rental yet. We're already talking about.
No, but we're, we're kind of looking forward to the next step.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. The other item on our changes to codification of the village code and for different reasons, actually, I was at my meeting last month, we discussed modifying the code, of course, to accommodate the change of the medical district. And I reached out to Pat for some assistance on moving that through and delighted to learn that as usual, several steps, and already in touch with General Code who does E-code. Because remember, we allocated budget to promptly catch ourselves up and make sure that our digitized version of the code is actually a digitized version of the code.
Can I explain what codification, do you want to explain what the codification is? Because I don't know if the public would know what we're talking.
Are we talking about the same thing? Is that?
I think so. Because you're talking about putting the, our.
Approved.
The last approved law, putting it into our code. Currently, all our laws for the past four years or so, they're not, maybe even longer, they're not in our code. If you go on our village website, it has our village code, but then there's a side that says new laws. The codification, that's the term, I didn't know what it meant at the beginning either. It takes all those new, all those new laws, puts it into our code and removes the old parts so that it makes it a brand-new code. So it makes it simple so that you can go right to our code and it'll be up to date and current. And in our, and search, our process is every time a new local law is passed by this board, I submit it to the state and I also submit it to E-code. So it's on our website as a new law. And if you do search, you do find it, but it's not in the code. It's under the new law. But it's up to date as to local law number two of 2018, which was the craft workshop part of the zoning. So it's all, it's up to date.
So the backlog that we had has been cleared?
Will be cleared.
It will be.
Will be cleared.
Will be. Just with the budget amendment, the budget.
I know we've done enough, but so I had the, we allocated the money, but the task has not been accomplished yet.
I've, I've put all the local laws on our website and in our code, but it has, has new laws. It has not been put into the code. That's what, that's what General Code will be working with, with us.
I think that Brent is right. I think that the, with the legacy items, go back as far as six years. This surfaced at the meeting last night. Someone said, I'm trying to piece this together and I, I'm searching them, but where is it? We said, well, you have to look at a different section because that's where the pending PDFs are that can have a depending because the depending would be codified. And the good news is that's very much in progress. And the last item, I'm sorry.
It'll be starting in three weeks.
That's fantastic. That's great.
I'd like to imagine this is an effort that we started almost, John.
A year ago.
Almost a year ago. So to bring it to, wow, thank you.
I thank, I thank this board for taking on this task because if you look at our website, you can see how long it's gone. So I thank this board.
And the last item, Mr. Mayor, the board is this matter of the plan assessment for the town of Rhonda, which of course will incorporate the village of Rhonda. Let me start by saying that this, the last assessment, reassessment was 2004. That's 14 years ago. And to be clear, this assessment is not about taxation. It's different. It's how the, the tax levy is ultimately dispersed and distributed. And we want to see a more up-to-date assessment. And the town conducted a meeting this evening with the contractors that have been engaged to make this process happen. No, there won't be any impact until September of 2020. Not that that's that far away. But what we did want to discuss was this matter of amnesty. What the town has established is already a practice that says, hey, we're going to begin this, in fact, before we started the, the data work, you know, the background, we're going to begin this process and we're going to be visiting properties and homes and not only get into too many of the details. And if you made an addition to your home and didn't submit the proper permits, now's the time to come forth, acknowledge that and pay the fees that you should have paid. And if you don't come forward and we discover it at a later date, it's going to be pure matter. So I think one of the things that we want to contemplate is would we consider something similar?
And this is, I believe it's six months, correct?
I don't think they said that during the.
But we should search.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly.
If we want to adopt.
Yeah, yeah, certainly not less than three months, yeah. But I don't think they were prepared to adopt anything tonight, but I think we want to be thankful what to be aware of.
I think, and I, speaking, discussing as a building inspector, he did not feel that it was as significant of a problem in the village, only because of the way we've been conducting the business and it's been more proactive, I should say.
Right.
In a lot of ways. So it's, it's really up to the board if we want to adopt an amnesty period as part of the overall townwide assessment.
So I'll, because it wasn't, obviously she had this evening, but I'm certain that there's a resolution of policy that's been passed. All the work with the town, secure a copy of that and share that with yourself, with the mayor and the trustees and determine if that's something that we want to record in the report.
Very good.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the highway. Okay. So the biggest things about highway department is that the paving projects for this year have begun. Today, both crossmoors and Violet Place or Mill, which is basically the old asphalt that's taken up tomorrow, the highway department will be doing some touch-up work on that, doing what's called T-N-L true leveling. And on Monday, the town highway department is scheduled to come in and start paving. So there, as of yesterday, they were on track to do that. And so that's a significant project. We saved a fair amount of money by using the town as our contractor for, for the paving. So in addition to that, basically the department has been taking care of its monthly duties, brush removal, mechanical maintenance, sign replacement, road repair and tree trimming and removal. The, John Fenton asked me to pass along that last year we started, he started flagging and marking sidewalks within the village that needed to be repaired. So he may have noticed there were like orange flags and some orange sprays that he was putting out. That was on hold for the spring, but once again, he will be out starting July 16th, marking, marking sidewalks and homeowners will be getting letters about, about their need to do sidewalk repair. So I want to let you know that that was coming out.
I'd like to add a comment to that because I think we've had a tremendous response from village owners repairing their driveways. And to date, I think the number is like 42 village owners have already stepped forward and repaired their sidewalks that have been notified of some sort of ill-repair. So I thank everybody for doing that. It really helps create a walkable village for us, for everybody to enjoy. And we're looking forward to continuing that effort and your support.
That's it.
Water. Do you want to turn that on? You mind if we turn the air back on for a little bit?
We can put it on lower.
Move forward. I won't bite, I swear.
This is not like church.
So water, the monthly report, there was 15,394,000 gallons. It's higher in the summer because people are watering and the days were longer, et cetera. They clean the settling tanks, which sends the sediment into the lagoon, which I'll get to in a little bit. And normal maintenance and mowing, weed whacking, et cetera. It's both the plant and the Violet Hill storage tank. I've got a two-bit things tonight. I did give you guys the one on the chemical pump. It's just a small chemical pump for the coagulant, which is the stuff that gets the particles from the river to stick together so we can filter it out. It's a $2,000-ish item. We got one bid, this is a chemical, chemical metering pump with a valve and input and output signal cables. We got one bid from C3ND Consulting for $2,062.80. These are the same pumps, same model and everything. We got one bid from JV Enterprises for $2,075.40. And we got a bid from Regen Water for $2,381. So I'd like to make a motion that, we got three bids from the procurement policy because we're supposed to buy, get three bids. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $2,062.80 bid from C3ND Environmental Consulting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Staying?
So this is the bigger one, did you guys see?
I'm going to get the hard copy of that because I have nothing.
Okay, did they see this? Because I forwarded this to you this afternoon.
The proposal.
Yeah.
It's on, it's on the cloud.
A proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah, my friend here, Larryos.
They have that, but I don't have anything.
So this is the proposal to do the engineering plan and bid documents to clean out the sludge in the lagoon. We've looked at a bunch of options. One is we have to dewater it because it's in such, so basically it's a hauling issue. You don't want to haul water away and put all these little, you know, sludge particles in it because it's just heavy and costs a lot of money. So we have to dewater it. There's different types of dewater. You can do a sludge press. You can do a centrifuge which kind of whips the fluid out. And then you, but the tried and true method is to use these filtration bags. So this is what we're sort of hoping that will work out is that we would have this huge area that would be cleared and we put these giant filtration bags in. We have a pump that pumps 2,000 gallons per hour, pumps the slurry up the hill into the bag and then the water runs out of the side through the pores in the bag. And then the sludge particles are in there and they set, it can sit down for a year or so and freeze. And then you get it to the point where it's drier and cheaper to haul away. So I'm working with Dennis Larios, with Renee and Larios. He's done a lot of work for both wastewater plant and water plant. He's given me a bid to do the surveying for the pad area for the engineering plan and bid documents. And. And those would be the first two phases. You do the engineering, draw up the scope of work, do the bid documents, and award the job to contractors. We're looking at these forecasting maybe 5,000 cubic yards of solid material that we'll ultimately need to haul away. We did feasibility study on this, and the range of doing this project was between $900,000 and almost $1.2 million. If I can do the dewatering with the bag, we might get this down to 400 grand. So that's... And we're talking to the person who did it 18 years ago. He said, talked about the process. So I have a bid for $3,400 from Briner and Larios for the survey, land survey. To do the engineering plan and the bid docs would be $15,900 for a total of $19,300 if we was to do this.
We recently did a survey of that land. We had to visit some land, a year ago, two years ago, was it? I think it was two years ago when one of the neighbors to the water treatment plant, water treatment plant, had built over on the property and we had to get the property back. I think it was a full survey done at that time.
So this is a total survey? It's the chosen ingredient of land?
Yeah.
You're probably talking about a land survey. You know what, it might get cheaper if you supply it.
All I'm saying is we might be able to save.
We can tighten this. We might be able to tighten that because, yeah, the boundaries are...
We knew it was Mr. Engineer Renske who did that survey as part of the...
So what we could do is we could approve it, you know, subject to him tightening that number. If the survey, the boundary survey that we have two years ago, can tighten that $3,400. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
I didn't know about that.
No, I know. I didn't know about this. We carry information.
Yeah, I just got it.
Yeah.
But I don't want the timeline. If we get it up, if we get the bid package out next month, and then we get it awarded for the statutory period, we could get started in the fall.
And so I don't remember the number to carry games. Does your plan, you know, capital water?
So, yeah, yeah. So we have about, what, 250 grand capital fund?
200, I think we went like 270,300.
Yeah, we have a capital, we have a fund balance of approximately 500,000. Now, we did pledge to do 250,000 for the down payment for the water line project. But we can tap into the fund balance for that, bring the fund balance down to 250,000, just go adequately, and use this, the lagoon capital for this. So I think this will be a phase, a multi-year project. Hoping to, you know, to kind of court a local person because then they don't really, they don't have to do all the staging and everything, and we can use smaller filtration tanks. Believe it or not, the 40 feet, 500 feet bags are actually kind of small, this type of thing. And then we'll maybe like two or three bags. So...
And then, from what I understand, you can take that sediment out, basically, you're destroying those guys. You remove the sediment, and then you come in.
Excavate it out.
And then excavate it out, bring it through that, and start over again.
We might want to explore, even on site, if everyone explore that. Maybe we can just smooth it out. Because we, this gets real hysterical. What we did is sludge analysis and the composition of the sludge that needs to be removed is not really a lot different than some of the regular soil elements you find. It's not contaminated. Said it wasn't contaminated. There's some things in there that are fantastic, but it's...
No, somehow.
It would probably qualify for a beneficial use. We may wish to leave it because I can say it's what, 50 bucks a ton. But for now, this will be the first two phases.
Basically, we're looking at approximately $19,000 right to fund the first two phases to do the engineering.
For...
And the paper.
Yeah. We don't have to do the bid docs internally. We've done that before. It saves us a lot. We don't want to do that.
It's a respecialized.
See, their experience, they built the wastewater plant, they built, I worked with them on the sludge press for the wastewater facility. They've done, when we had to expand the wastewater plant, they designed that.
We are on a timeline. We draw a timeline, we see for...
This is a big one for 18 years.
In terms of since the last night was cleaned out.
Yeah, I'm determined to move this.
I emphasize to the board that this is a necessary project that we need undertaken. We've been pursuing it for quite some time.
I believe that we spent up to $19,300 for the work as outlined in the Briner and Larios piece. The proposal as presented.
Can I just amend that? My men would say. He was a man, and then a guy.
Okay. I believe that we spend up to $19,300 from capital fund of the wastewater, wastewater fund, something.
Oh, water fund.
Water, excuse me, water fund, to fund the proposal from Briner and Larios as presented to trustee Briner for work to do some site engineering and do the preparation for eventually clean out of our...
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Stand?
Thank you. Oh, just, he's been giving me plenty of free advice also, Dennis. To get to this point.
Howie, Tricky Howie, wastewater.
Okay, I'd like to announce that we put out an ad for a chief wastewater position. Should be a 3A operator. Put that out for seven days right now.
I was in the house lieutenant, it's my out to public.
So it's open? Okay. Right. And we didn't get any qualified candidates. So we're back to the square one here on what we have to do with our position there at the 3A operator. Do you want me to discuss what I would like to do, or... Okay, I spoke to John Fenton today, trying to hash out what we should do. Currently, Brian Bacamo has a 2A operator, and it's probably taken eight to nine months to get to 3A. And in the meantime, our two operators are working on weekends covered for weekend time periods. And we also operate under 3A license of paintball pollution control. So we're covered for now. John and I were talking about maybe just sharing one person in the water department. Work part-time in the water, part-time in the wastewater department. Who thinks we got the capacity for that? Water department. We don't really need a full-timer in the wastewater department, but this is why we got to talk about this. This just happened today around four o'clock.
Because I've been told from internally that our water department guys, you know, they're busy now. But it sounds like John Fenton has a bid.
Yeah. So this is for further investigation.
Sounds like we did.
Yeah.
We have to make sure we have shift coverage.
I mean, I can give you some feedback in a couple of days.
Okay. So until we talk about that, we're in limbo right now.
We're going to keep operating.
Yeah, right.
Which we are covered.
We're covered.
We're covered.
Okay. Now for the report, for June 2018, we had wastewater treated was 3.6 million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was 37,800 gallons. And pounds of sludge processed was 4,598 pounds. And that's it for the wastewater department.
Okay, committee reports. First is the tree committee.
The first thing I'd like to do quickly, and then I'd like to give a couple of members of the tree committee here to explain the situation. So first off, the tree committee did examine one, two, three, four, five, six applications for curating and removal at 47 Violet, 7 West Market, 10 Center Street, 12 Center Street, 46 LDC Street, and 74 Livingston Street. The tree commission recommended the removal and curating of the trees as indicated. The future of the trees. I think that there's one issue that two of these trees are at, actually in the back of this whole parking lot. And it's a little unclear on whose property, who owns whose property, they're on against the villages or the homeowners, or who's responsible for...
Yeah, the applications were in the property, it was named Frank Gagiel.
Oh, okay. So I'd like to move that we accept the tree commission's planning and removal recommendations for all of the... For all, for all. For all avenues. Is that okay?
Okay, are they all for tree removal?
It's removal line, removal line.
Oh, okay. Yeah. A gentleman named Mr. Barachio, a neighbor on Violet. His concern had to do with paving the river. And I had spoken to, actually, May, the chairwoman of the tree commission last week. Actually, it's good enough to go out, we visited the gentleman two weeks ago. And our expectation was that in preparation for the paving of Violet, the highway department was playing a tribute to the grays last Friday. And I don't, I think it happened.
Didn't have a vote, did I?
No. It did happen yesterday, and I'm sure it happened today.
Can I give you an update on that?
Sure.
I do have an update.
Okay.
It was anticipated the milling machine was going to be hindered by the low branches of those trees. So what they did today was actually take the milling machine, kind of curve out around the trees, and then brought in a smaller and went underneath the trees. So they weren't, they didn't have to do the training that they thought they had to do for the milling machine. Tomorrow, the assistant superintendent for the town highway department is going to look at it, make sure that the paper can still fit underneath that. It looks like we've avoided the situation of having to kind of reshape those trees based on...
Working around your... Right, we have a milling attachment to the bombcat, so they can use small areas without...
Rig solution?
Yeah.
Really just want to take the trees down. They're pretty beautiful trees.
Well, it's, and I would say that the tree commission did say if the painting shield damaged the trees so much that they wouldn't come down, that that would be a potential site to replant in the spring of 2019. But it sounds like we've avoided that. So the other issue for the tree commission is the standing dead. Apologies, this is still kind of... So I have, the whole members of the tree commission, do you want to explain what you guys did or what?
We've been, um, in the same village. Sorry.
Come on.
Is the microphone?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Tom Tuchas, the tree commission. So we've been compiling a list of hazardous trees in the village. We're not quite complete. Pretty much done the north, east, and the south, northwest is still holding. Anyway, in doing that, you know, there's a lot of, we have to get it done before winter and get things kind of shored up. But in doing that, we found that there's, man, there's 12 from what, from the paths that we've walked, that are just standing dead trees, they're just dead. And they're unsightly and they're a hazard. And there's one right on Montgomery, right in front of Moll and Swallow. It's just a big dead tree, it's not a reconnoit. And we have 12 of those, so we're asking if those can be removed as soon as possible. And they're, most, none of them are under wires, they're smaller trees. Some of them are very small. Some, maybe this is not big projects that we think of highway department handling. And so we can get those sites ready for planting in the fall for the sprint, you know, to kind of prep that. But they're just standing dead trees. Livingston in particular has six.
And there's a large, even in the applications here, there's a lot of trees that are in flag on Livingston Street.
Yeah.
I'm starting to get the concern that we're really taking away a lot of the cover that's on Livingston Street already.
They still have a good amount. There are big, nice big trees on Livingston, for instance, the one at 46 Livingston. There's a lot of old maples, and there are some that are coming down, like the Alexander Street. So there's a little, oh, that's why we want to start planting them as soon as possible.
You know, I mean, we didn't approve all of these. The one on the corner of Livingston and Mulberry where we want to take down all of the crabapple trees on the street side and then remove, approve the one on Mulberry street side. That takes out a large portion of trees.
But those trees, those trees have been unhealthy. I mean, this is as per, you know, I consulted with Matt on this one too. Those trees are in not good shape and they never have been, they're kind of unsightly. There are beautiful maples above them. They've never had enough sun to thrive, so they're kind of creepy.
But the proposal, you put a fence where they are?
We're working with that, it's honestly a fence. I actually am a landscape artist, well, the higher hand, working on the property. Probably, we haven't, nothing's been defined yet because we didn't want to look forward to the removal. There were likely a box to patch like the house in corner across the street. But until we remove, you know, so the owner didn't want to remove anything, but he and I recommend other streets. They're just not very attractive because they never have been. And since they really upgraded that property since, you know, the last year, and they're one of the first ones they get restored. And we're planning to plant more trees in the brow.
Question, if the fence has gone there, what is the end result of what we're seeing? Will we treat the fence?
It's up to the plant board to figure out if the fence is going there.
Right, and that's not, it's not, that's just a possibility. It's that the primary is to plant actually trees within the brow, but the first step will be after these out. So I'm going to do one of the trees. And this, by the moment, not the one that wants to plant ornamentals in the sun, not in the middle of the sidewalk. We're going to break that sidewalk, but it'll, and that's a restored building on that street. So without crabapples, sort of, you know, it actually lends beauty to the street.
I walk through all the town, those are our shit trees.
I know.
They're busy budging.
They're all plant shit.
I think they were meant for privately, for privacy, and they don't quite work out. They're quite, they're quite, we've been there a long time.
Is this, is this the Lawson's house?
No, no, the owner now is Del Faro. The big car.
No, I don't, I was trying to figure out where it is on the street.
So did we determine the...
Anyway, that had nothing to do with standing dead, it's not a conversation. That was standing dead on the 12 streets that we're really hoping that we can get approval to get them to be taken out.
Highway department can take those out?
So I had a conversation with John Fenton, and we had had a conversation with Tom John. It was Tom's opinion that the highway department can take them out. I spoke to, um, John Fenton, and he said we could go one of two minutes. One, we could have the highway department do it, and they have the time over the summer doing it. The second would be to basically bid out the whole job to somebody else, let's say we have this dozen trees, need to come down, maybe with a, basically bulk price for a tree. So those are the directions we could go. Now, as the law is written, we would be willing to use back to, um, this is, this is...
And some of the chew on, or municipal lots are safety concerns in the village.
That was unclear.
Yeah, the village, the proposal is because this is a municipal lot, the one needs to prune, the other one is a dead tree, that they are safety, but the village, for municipal lot, and given that they're on lot, village would bid that.
So we'd be, the village?
Um, for those to have the closing of the village pay for those, because they're on the line and it's a lot.
Right back here.
Yeah.
But they're in the, they're in the village property.
Well, they're like on the line, I mean, they're not...
Yeah.
It's not 100% totally on your side.
I mean, I think the law that I read says that homeowners have to pay for the trees that are, you know, in the right way.
We, we, we approached these on, because they're on the line. They said the only way they were going to do it was if we paid for that. They're not, they're not paying for the tree, and either that or they don't come down.
Every house, yeah.
Why would that make a difference in the street?
Try to get... It's not in the right of way, right? Back here.
It would have been...
That's what I'm saying, so...
Well, it brings us back to the standing dead. There's a variety of situations, there's, you know, some of them are one-inch caliber, like the one in front of 69 Livingston is, it's a pluck out, I could drive, it's a drive-by. Obviously, the one in front of Waddle and Swaddle is a community issue, it really likes, it's right literally in the center of town, and it's not, and it, we need someone to do it carefully at a, at a good time, because it's really just... And then, there's a variety, so some are probably, and, and one of the applications that came in late, just so you know, Matt, he came into our meeting, Matt Stitch, Stitch phone?
Oh, that's not the one I'm thinking of.
Which is, it's on Livingston as well, the tree, but his address is, uh, the center, the big yellow house. But his is probably an eight or 10-inch caliber tree, completely dead. But it's, um, most of these are on medium, I think they're all on medium.
There was another one at 11 Summers in Leanne, that's another one that we had planted.
Right, so we had planted some of them, you know?
I know the one on Livingston Street the homeowners agreed to pay for.
Which?
The one on the big yellow house.
The one you just...
Oh, yeah, Matt, yeah.
Yeah.
They're on, they're on...
The homeowners have...
Yeah, right there.
I'm ready to take it down, just give me the permission.
So can, can, how do we proceed with that? Like, we just call Matt?
Yeah, we can...
Anyway, so...
But that's application, that's one of the applications.
What a standing dead, kind of different situation.
It's two, it's two discussions, right? It's the applications and it's the separate...
Well, there's one in that's the same, because he has a standing dead.
You said, I think, a dozen trees?
Yeah.
And one of them happens to have submitted an application as well.
But that application wouldn't come in, so we, we haven't seen that application technically. In fact, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. But there were 12 standalone trees that have nothing to do with applications.
That's correct.
And they're all dead, a hazardous, and we believe that our own highway department could remove these.
That's correct.
Not all of them.
We believe they can.
No, not the standing dead one that's in municipal lot.
That's not one of the standing dead.
Oh, that's not true.
That one that was coming in with the application.
So...
We should have a list. Waddle and Swaddle.
So you said that, that one, you could take that one down?
No, they can, yes, I mean, these aren't complicated, it's not a huge tree, there's no wires. It's just a matter of, you know, I mean, our highway department knows how to avert traffic safely, you know, that, that wouldn't be a concern.
If, 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 let's make the presumption that these, these 12 standalone dead trees could be removed by our own highway department. So then there would be no cause to be blown by anyone other than our highway department.
No, it gets built back to the, um...
How do you build it?
But they're already, or they're...
Maybe people bring in, you know, like days, especially... We got it, well, then we, then, here's the problem running into it, the way the law is crafted, and craft this law, the homeowner is responsible for removing trees. And we have gotten homeowners and say, your tree's a hazard, remove it, and they've paid for it. So it would seem a little unfair right now for us to say, oh, well, our highway department did it, so we're not going to bill you back for our highway department's time. That would be double dibby. That, that would be, no, well, that would be what the law would say, that we would be billed, we should bill back for our highway department's time, because we can't remove, it's up to the homeowners burden to bear for the cost of removal of the tree. And I don't, I don't see any way we can, we can waive that in this case, in any of these cases. I don't think it's good law, but that's what we have to work with right now.
Yeah, I think that we need to, but the, the greater danger in my mind is that we're double dibby. You've got highway department that's covered through taxes.
They're getting paid already.
Well, then, then maybe we should bid the whole thing out, because if, if I'm a homeowner and I've paid for a private service to do it, and then you're going to go over and say, hey, well, have the highway department do it and won't cost anything. I'm a little annoyed.
I, I thought the difference was that there were trees that our highway department could not do, and, and there are trees that they can do.
Who knows what the past tells?
Well, I, yeah, there's two, there's, in this application, I believe there, these are, we're not talking about highway department for these.
No, no.
The standing dead. The standing dead.
Yeah, yeah, the standing dead. We could do, well...
In the past, we've had the highway department take down trees that they're able to take down without billing anybody.
That means...
That's what we've done in the past.
I think trustee Louis said something similar.
They prune also.
Yeah, they prune, we don't charge people.
Right, so we'll just, they have it taken down and then...
Okay, but I think this brings up to the point that we need to revisit this policy of having homeowners pay for their trees removed, because it seems like, if I neglect my tree and it's small enough, I can get the town to do it.
If it needs to be paid for, then they have to pay for it.
Well...
That's it, well, the sidewalk is all in the same situation, they have, they're responsible for the sidewalk, as long as they're also responsible for the tree in the right way.
Right, but we're saying to these people, our highway department doing it, not responsible. Right?
Yeah.
Well, is that fair?
Listen, you're saying some of these trees are going to be pulled out with a hand, right? Want me to go around and do that?
Two, your film.
Not one or two, no, one or two, but some, but some are getting, you know...
No, wait, wait, those were trees that we planted that people didn't water, that people didn't water, right? So that's, that's the other problem.
Some, some, but no.
Right, right.
We're, we're being advised by our tree commission that there's a matter of public safety, and, and we're stating this publicly, and I don't know how we don't address this , Mr. Mayor, as soon as possible. And if the highway department can do these...
I haven't heard that they're public safety, I heard they're standing dead.
Well, they're standing dead, which makes them become...
And they're, and they're all in the right of way.
Correct.
That's...
And that's slightly, and the sooner they're down, the sooner we can, they're planting.
They're all street trees.
They're all street trees.
Yes.
All amenities.
Which is important.
I don't see that this is a big injustice on those folks that had to pay for their trees removed, but if they come in, then we'll deal with it when we can't, when we have to, but I think we should just vote to have the highway department remove it if we can.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we subcontract out the job, that we take bids to remove the 12 trees from a private contractor and have that price distributed among the homeowners.
So we have two competing ideas here?
We have two competing ideas here.
What, you're saying you're going to get one bid, you're going to distribute it evenly amongst all of, all the people?
Yeah, which is what CentraFond does for us.
And my motion is to have the highway department take them out if they can.
I'm going to receive the second.
Where's for seconded?
No, mine was not seconded.
Neither was mine.
Well, wait, we've got to do one at a time, right?
We have a second.
I only wanted to be, because if I misrepresented the concern, I want to be clear on the record that, that I misrepresented, that they're not a, a public safety concern, these trees.
They are.
They are, because they're dead.
They're big enough to mess them up.
They are, yeah.
Give me a second.
Then we need to move vigilance and get this corrected, and the fastest way to do that appears to be on our highway department.
Second from my motion.
Does that a second on my motion?
No, no, you can, mine has to go down first.
I'll second it.
You'll second it, okay.
Okay, second it. All, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Motion fails.
Abstained? Carry. All right.
Excuse me, hi. Did Alessandra say we could leave, she's my house, this one that was that you just approved to come down?
No, we were talking about standing dead.
Well, this one is pretty damn dead. I mean, it has sent down two branches, twice I've had to call, not, to have somebody come and cut them, cut down the branches that were...
And it's a really large tree. None of the ones that we're talking about are very large trees, they're, they're...
These are little.
10 to 12 little trees, you know, they're not old growth trees, and they're not under wires, that's where they're just, you know, I understand your, I understand your position, so...
It's frustrating.
And it's towards your position, that's...
I know.
It doesn't seem equitable.
It is.
My trustee Louis does not seem equitable.
I agree.
So it seems that we should notify the homeowners?
Well, I think there was a motion.
We don't have, we don't approve motion yet on the standing dead.
No, I'm just saying, well, the alternative is about the standing dead, if it's not going to get done by the highway department, we have Matt, who's ready and willing to get somebody to take the tree down, I guess we're saying yes to him, correct? Because he's, he's, he's notified us that he has a standing dead tree and he wants to remove it, can't he?
But the application isn't in this month, man, because he attended our meeting, but he didn't, certainly haven't made it until the next morning.
I saw it in the email, so I don't know where it went.
It's not here.
I, it didn't come across our...
Oh, so you didn't get...
We can, we okay, if we can all agree to agree on 20 Center Street, that he can...
I don't have an application for that.
I thought I saw it in the email, somewhere.
It was on the table at the meeting. I remember, it was not...
I met the next day by the...
Because he signed it in front of us. I remembered that. Anyway, regardless, there are 11 other...
Let's get back to the state, let's get back to the state.
And there are 11 other than...
He is one of the standing dead, he's a homeowner who's agreed to pay.
Correct.
I make a motion that we approve the one on Livingston Street, whatever the address is, the application for the homeowner to pay for the removal of that tree, of that tree.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstained? Carry.
I would like to make a motion that we have the 12 standing dead trees...
11.
11, okay. 11 standing dead trees, taken down by our highway department. If they encounter a tree that cannot be safely removed by our own highway department, then that tree should be out to bid, and we should follow protocol that's been established, that the homeowner or the resident property owner will be required for, be required to pay, or... But that, those things that we can remove quickly by our own highway department, I would suggest that we do that with the caveat that if they approach a tree that they can't move, then it's, we default to the existing policy as we know it. That's my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
Nay.
I oppose. Yes, I oppose. So, but motion, motion carry. Motion carry.
So hopefully that takes care of the 11. Thank you.
It's the regular work, Dad.
It's, it's, it's what we're paying them to do.
No, no, I'm correct.
You just said that you're going to charge the homeowner.
If they encounter a...
If you can.
If one of the 11...
So I have a tree that I love purposely down, and I've probably tried to remove for the past eight years, and now I'm going to get it taken down free, like was brought up earlier. It's my negligence, my left to go, now I can get it down for free, yay for me.
It's tiny, it's a little.
It's the highway department taking it down.
And if it represents a real and immediate safety danger to the board...
It's relative to size, here's what we're talking about.
This is what I have to point out, this tree that we're coming down, I'm lying, twice it has come, big branches have come down, they've missed my husband by this much, and they've taken down wires. We actually had power outage taken out, so isn't that a safety issue?
The branches are down, it was a dying tree that had...
Oh, but it's got a lot of whole branches, like, and...
Yeah, but it's healthy at the top right now, although you said it's...
It's not really, I had Mike's tree service there, they're dying, there's ants coming up, we've had, like, we don't want the trees down, we'd love to have these big trees, but they are dead on the inside with ants and squirrels, everything else. Isn't that a danger?
We get back to some more.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to revisit this situation, because I do think there is an equity issue. We'll try, I'll try to bring some ideas before the board, because unfortunately, I mean, Brenda has a point, which is we've made it expensive for people to maintain their trees, to maintain their sidewalks, and it means that people aren't maintaining their trees and aren't maintaining their sidewalks. So I think we need to pick it up, what, what we're trying to accomplish with our, our semi-landscapes, like, but I just want to say I would like to continue this discussion.
Agreed.
Now, I'm a little bit confused, are you talking about the standing dead or the...
I'm done, no, 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 we're, no, 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 those are closed. I'm starting general, I just want to have a discussion in general.
I don't think you want to rescind the...
No, 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 no. Okay, that's done, that's done.
All right.
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done.
Okay. Ethics committee.
There was, there were minutes from the ethics committee.
Yes.
Has it made any comment on that?
Should read him into the record.
Okay. So the ethics committee did meet on May 14th, I think it was Gina Walker and Carol Burden. The board reviewed the list of village officers and employees subject to provisions of the village code of ethics. There was a question whether justices, judges, and employees of the uniform court system are subject to the code. The board reviewed an annual draft notice to be sent to all village officers and employees who are subject to the village code of ethics. That will be discussed and reviewed at the next meeting. And there have been no transactional disclosure statements, disclosable interest statements, and/or applicant disclosure statements that have been transmitted to the board by the village clerk since the last meeting, basically.
Next, short-term vacation rental committee.
So we had a long meeting last night, we talked about various and sundry items with the short-term rentals. We're going to, Donna Warner and Linda Kristen is going to work with me, we're going to summarize some of the things that we all talked about last night. I think universally we agreed for non-hosted rentals, where somebody rents out their home and they're not there, that 40 nights, which was proposed in the draft by the commission, is excessive, so we're somewhere between not allowing non-hosted rentals and maybe 16 nights a year, my sense is. There's talk about having a site plan review for, for all the non-hosted rentals, so we're going to come up with a kind of a blueprint for how to move forward, and I'll bring it back to you guys.
Okay, next on, next is the environmental committee report. There was no environmental committee this month, it was to be the day after, the Fourth of July, and it was on, if we get enough attending, it'll be rescheduled. We do have, though, the RFP for the EV charging stations, and that was put out to bid, and during the course of the bid, it was advertised, and we diligently sent out emails to various And we diligently sent out emails to various companies and got one response back for the EV charger stations to be installed in invisible lot here behind Village Hall. The total cost of the charging stations is $15,456, which includes two Level Two chargers, the activation fee, the validation to participate in ChargePoint, and the concrete mounting pier, the installation, and the software subscription, which is for one year. This is well within our allocation that we had in our grant. I don't have the exact numbers. Trustee Rossi and I reviewed them. But it's literally to say thousands of dollars less than what we had put into grant to do this. It has been reviewed by Benny Collet, who was our project manager. He has blessed us and said this is actually a very good application and it preferred installer to be able to do this. So I would like to make a motion that we accept plug-in stations online for $15,456 to actually do the installation of our EV charging stations. And from start of contract signed to completion is fifteen days.
This is, Mr. Mayor, this is an exceptional price. And I just want the Board to know that when we submitted the grant application, I was usually easily five, six thousand dollars above what the mayor has been able to secure through the RFP process. And I wasn't fudging numbers because we need to demonstrate where we get the numbers from. And in some cases, it was actually bid that we...
We used real bids.
And sometimes it was similarly situated municipalities. We took their numbers. And we thought they were pretty good numbers. This is exceptional. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There's two additional items to go with this. That is the installation of the EV charger with the base and everything else. The second issue is to getting the electric from the police station to the EV charging station. And this company is also, we have two bids for that. The first bid is from the same company, Plug-In Stations Online. There's two pieces to this because they, I want to read it. To install a new conduit wire and pull box with an existing panel in the police station to the charging station, the price would be $2,500 for full station capacity or $1,750 for a power share setup. In other words, if you share power. They run two lines versus one line, right? And it goes into detail what they would require. One of the things that they did not add into this bid, which is the generator, which has to run the police station. And I don't know why, but they did, they missed the portion of being able to do the connection because we have to do a different type of connection. Because to have to keep the generator to fire up and run, the generator cannot support the EV chargers. That's the key point. So we're bypassing that. So they did not bypass this with the generator, which to me doesn't make it a valid bid for us to be able to use. I did reach out to our village electrician, whose village court just gave me. And I'll read it. I don't see what he submitted. This is from D-Long Electric, 65 Chestnut Street, Village Reinbeck. Estimate to install 100 amp sub-panel in the police station with 250 amp feed for car chargers in back parking lot. Supply feed to car chargers does not include installation of the car charging station, which is in the other. All labor materials, electrical inspections are included. And the excavation is come by us, by Village and Kind contribution, which is a bypass for the generators. His total bid is $3,950 because it is more work to be able to bypass the generators to feed that.
And does this get billed back to the grant?
Yes. All of this gets billed to the grant as part of the grant application.
Let's try that we put in that much, $3,900. That's...
We have five, we had $5,000. Because that's what we negotiated due on the county to cover our electric cost.
Okay, I was hoping that you would say that.
Yeah. No, we had, so the counties, by contribution, has agreed to cover our electric installation cost as well as, you know...
So what is covered by the grant? If I did underestimate that, the county will pick it up. Because I was hoping that was still the commitment.
So it's of no cost because there are negotiations on the county, because the county wants to participate in the usage of the EV charging. So I can make a motion that we accept the bid from D-Long Electric for the installation of the 100 amp sub-panel to the police station that is supplied to EV charging stations for $3,950.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain? So carry. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Parks Committee.
Okay. Had some good news on the Legion Park Improvement Project. Bid notice was put in the paper, our official paper, The Daily Freeman, for this project to go out to bid. A copy of the bid will be in Pat's office tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. And interested parties can come in and look at Pat's copy. And then if they want to further invest, further apply for this project, they can go up to Crawford Engineering up in Hudson. Pat will have all the information where they go. Bids will be received until July 27th at 3:00 p.m. in Pat's office. So the project is moving right along.
This is excellent news.
Yeah.
This is really good.
It just happened like in the last couple of days.
Yeah.
I mean, because the county had a, I actually did see the county notice in the paper. They have some, because it's a county grant, they put a notice in the paper. That was in there last week. Just happened to look at it. Just happened to see it. Wasn't really looking for it. And so this is what the next part of this project is.
Good.
Going out to bid?
Excellent.
Yeah. And I'll keep you posted on that.
That's great.
Thanks.
The bids have to be received again up until July 27th at 3:00 p.m. in Pat's office, the clerk's, the village clerk's office. Thank you.
Can you do a second?
And I don't know if you want me to talk about, we've been...
Yeah.
We've been talking with...
Well, the next is the grants, the next subject is the Grant Advisory Committee.
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, happy to just say that we've got everything continued to be in motion. We are working closely with each of the trustees. And Howie, should we talk about the project in Legion?
Well, there is a second phase for this Legion Park Improvement Project that was kind of looked at when the original project was all started. This was not put out to bid, but there's a future wish list of things to be done. And I forgot the gentleman's...
Ryan.
Ryan.
Yeah.
No, Ryan's the engineer. Your friend.
Oh, Trevor. And Gabby.
Yeah.
We're doing that, you know, committee.
Yeah.
They were part of the original...
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, they did the original sketches.
And they have the schedule still. And we're looking into, we're working with Ryan from Crawford to see if we can further improve this project after this first phase is done.
That's one of the three.
That's one. So at some point, I think we need to get this, that in front of the public at the sign.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Just like we did with this phase of it. Get a concept, get a design up in front so everybody could do that as part of going forward. Because I really don't even know what it consists of.
You mean what the bid is?
No, the grant, we're proposing writing a grant for this next phase of the Crystal Command.
Right, right.
And that has a design associated with it.
It's two bridges.
Yeah, and I believe we need to get those bridges and everything out in front of the public so that everybody's aware of where we're going.
Let's get the grant filed because I am nervous about the deadline because we've got three things in motion. Actually, trustee Lou has two important grants in motion. One, which is due this Thursday, and that is, I'm sorry that folks in the Tree Commission laughed because it is very specific to dealing with this issue of more intelligent than moving forward. So we are seeking a $50,000 grant from the state of New York for sophisticated inventory software that would, and a professional firm to populate that software with every tree in either our right-of-way, our parks, our streets, as well as, Mr. Mayor, as you know, a section of the cemetery. And a special resolution which bears with the town to incorporate that into the bid. Thousands of trees would be uploaded. And we have a real-time, up-to-date spreadsheet courtesy of this GPS software that's measuring all the really vital software that I trees. We get this grant. It serves as a linchpin to go back a year from now and ask for another grant that you won't get unless you've done this one. And that's money for ongoing maintenance. So we could potentially seek funds from the state that would help us fund the very things that we are... Trustee Lou was right to say, look, this is a conflict. But if we had some state money through a robust grant, and I say robust, $50,000 is not insignificant. It's 100% funded. There's no, it's not 50/50. It's 100% DEC funding. So, you know, it provides, could be so fortunate. We get a file that was successful. We will have the first, we will have a valuable tool. And we also will have a stepping stone for a year from now.
As the state requires that you've done this mapping step before they will start giving you money for...
You're correct.
That's very clear. They said you did this, then you get that.
And we have everything ready for that grant.
Just about.
About.
We're about 95% there.
Deadline date is Thursday.
And make profit. Chairwoman and I are meeting 4 o'clock for our afternoon. And we won't leave until we get signed.
Okay.
And then we have a second grant with Rick. Is the build out of the bikes and sidewalks. However, in a way, that's been, and I use this word in the best possible context, cannibalized by the DOT grant that we're working on. But we're going to, we're going to do both. We're going to go through...
Well, one has a different street aspect on it. One is economic development grant.
That's right.
And one is an economic development grant that actually takes, comes down Livingston Street, correct? And the other one, doesn't include Livingston Street, is a pedestrian bicycle pathway to the schools.
Right.
So there's, there are two. And the one goes to state federal fund, which is the school one. And the other one is state regional economic development grant, which is to provide traffic into the buildings. The two intersect at Mulberry Street?
Yeah.
So we share that, we share that intersect depending on how well we go. But why not go for both?
So what we would perhaps want to consider is, I'm going to say your grant is 80% funding, okay?
Correct.
We think that, you know, Rick's grant would be 50%.
Yep.
But you do better if you only ask for really what you need. So where I'm going is that I might ask for 10% from economic development. And the applicant must always put in at least 10% in these cases. So we might, we might seek 80% from Department of Transportation, a minus 10%, which makes us much more in the running, much more competitive, cover 90%, and we put in 10% to even find services.
And we have some potential on con services.
Right, right. Oh, yes, yeah. So that's kind of my strategy there.
Cool.
And then, and that's, those, along with Howie's, is all due on the 27th. And then brands is, we met just this past week. Actually, I'm sorry, yesterday.
Yeah, I was answering.
Same one. Very productive meeting, very positive. And again, this is a big ticket grant. And due on the 27th. That's where, you know, and then when we get through these on the 27th, we have the big one on August 16th. So that's the secret, the department.
The one for the water infrastructure? Or which one?
27.
Yes.
27, 27, 27.
My water infrastructure is, his CFA one is due on 27th.
They're all due at that time.
Except for Department of Transportation is August 16th.
August 16th.
My EFC avenue is not going to be due until sometime September, the reapplication.
We already did the preliminary for the DOT.
I'm glad you mentioned that. Yes, I had a deadline of June 28th. And you and I left at the Kipsey Workshop. We looked at each other and we said, yeah, we think we can get that done. And we did.
Yes. Good job.
So, hopefully, yeah.
I was asked a question because we did have people who wrote letters for a recommendation for the plant. Based on the preliminary, is there going to be a meeting? And do we get a result of the preliminary, whether to go forward or we move, we still move forward?
So the reason we wanted to do this preliminary filing was because you get more points.
Right.
So by making that deadline, we should be already five points towards the 100.
Correct.
You have the 100 being the maximum for it. What happens next is confirmation that, yeah, we got your documentation. And here's the things that we are recommending that you do. And it's a full review of what we submitted on the 28th. If we get that, it not only serves as confirmation that we got the first five percent, we get five percent more for that.
Correct.
So now we're 10 points in with the rest of the application being done. So I'm sorry for the wrong answer.
No, no, I think it's important that everybody understand the process that's involved here.
So short term, next 24 hours is the Tree Defibrillate Grant, July 27th. That's a super critical deadline. That's Howie, that's Rick, that the grant, grant is, and this is always a strategy, Mr. Mayor, a parallel application through ECF with Standtec. And then, of course, Department of Transportation in August.
So just on that grant, we met with Senator Serena.
Yes.
To review the process. And she had asked for a letter. Were you able to get the letter of her?
I have to do it. I'm going to do it this week.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, you should mention the letter.
He actually told me how to put it together yesterday.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
And I think that your outreach to the hospital for a letter of support.
Oh, well, anything we can get.
Oh, no, those things really...
Yes.
Did you do it with them yesterday?
Yeah, we met with them yesterday and asked them for a letter of support for the water infrastructure.
Excellent.
And they're already, it's like...
Correct, of course we do this.
Absolutely. So they were very supportive.
These things matter. The more letters of support you can get, and you know, you did a great job getting four of them. We're ready for Department of Transportation. It'll manage.
Yes, so I just wanted to, John, thank you for taking the village's grant pursuit to a really much higher level. I mean, the fact that we've got all these things going on, sort of the first arm of going through it, it's complicated. We're all learning along the way. But I really, really appreciate it, all that you've done really appreciate it, all that you've done to really accelerate us and put us much more aggressively in the forefront of going after these monies. They've been there, it takes a fair amount of organization and skill and time to get this all done, and it's really a great, it's a real great, great thing for the village. We may get some, we may not, we're gonna keep at it, and we're learning how to do it better and better.
Yeah, none of your absolute.
But thank, but thank you for really bringing the village's effort to it, to a higher, higher level.
I appreciate it, but it, but it's a team effort, and then I say everybody on right here, as well as the committee members that have stepped up, everyone's terrific, Peter Paul, and we can go on, and Sandra, and, but, but those are your deadlines.
Thanks. Let us know what we get else, but we need help to make this happen, okay? All right, so next is events and special requests. First is Assembly Cahill, Assembly Cahill application by Vicki Perry, Office Mayor, Administrative A. I don't see anything filled out here. This is to use a table.
It's for the farmer's market.
Farmer's Market table, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Date panel.
Sorry, I don't see a date.
July first.
July first. It was done, over.
No, there was multiple dates.
Multiple dates? Where are you seeing the dates? I'm looking at a hard copy.
And there's an email attached, there's an application.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the email, yes. Let me read it. So I have open, we offered dates of July first, twenty-nine, twenty-six, twenty-third, September twenty-third, thirtieth, October fourteenth, October twenty-eighth, November eleventh.
But the application says July first.
Yes, and maybe there's one with one.
We're currently booked, the session I'm trying to rethrow is...
I think there's one with the...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what they've decided.
I think she might have done it on July one.
Any online one?
No, she said she thinks they already did it July first, right?
They did July first, so that was done, okay. Douglas County, next one, Douglas County Progressive Action Alliance, submitted by Maria Quackenbush, Seven Franklin Road, Hyde Park, New York. Number of spaces is zero. This is again to use a table, Sunday's at the Reinbeck's Farmer, Farmer's Market, July fifteenth, August twelfth, September, September ninth, and this is to take voter registration, voting reform, and public financing of elections in New York State in single payer information.
They were canceling July fifteen and July twelve. I received an email from her.
Gotcha.
So they can try for September nine and hope to get volunteers.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Yes, for a motion.
There was an August twelfth, they had a table.
They, they, July fifteenth, August twelfth, they said no.
Oh, I thought you said July, okay.
They're canceling July fifteen and August twelve.
In August, okay.
Yeah, and, and so the only date is September ninth for the Farmer's Market. A motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanna, are we, are we, yeah, are we keeping track of how many tables are there?
Pat does, yes.
So...
I'm keeping, I, I don't go to the Farmer's Market to see who, how many, I keep, I have a spreadsheet of who has what.
Oh, okay.
Who has what dates.
And how many tables can we allow there?
There's only one table.
Just one.
Well, there was somebody else there just past weekend doing something else, it wasn't... It was to, it was like a raffle. Somebody had the tables set up and they were raffling something off.
Oh, last weekend, you're, you're talking, in the past?
No, that was last weekend.
Yeah, in the past, you're talking last weekend.
No, this past weekend.
Yeah, this last weekend.
Yeah. So that's what my question is, we're keeping track of, there's only supposed to be one table there, okay.
There's one table for us and one for the market, is that correct? That may have been the markets.
It was right, it was right next to, it was right to the left of, of the, the, the farmer's bills, the big bellies, somebody was set up there raffling something.
Right.
But anyway, I, I approve aye for this.
Okay.
I guess, maybe if I go there again, I'll ask questions.
If you look at, if you look at the Cahill application, let's go back, you'll see there's a note from Andrew, who's a market manager.
Right.
Who says, "We are currently booked for the season, I, the village area is not yet full." So they have, they have a table which they get to allocate, and we have a table which we get to allocate, so that may be a third table.
I don't know.
The village table is beyond the market, halfway from the parking lot.
Yeah, the Farmer's Market table was in the Farmer's Market.
Right.
Well, this one was, was right next to the, the big bellies.
So that's part of the...
I think it's the big bellies, no, the bellies is close, is before you get to the Farmer's Market.
Yeah, ours is near the big bells, that's, no.
That's somebody just being rude.
That was a...
I know, that's why I'm trying to figure out how many, that's why I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna start anything that day, because I don't know how many tables are supposed to be there.
Do I give them the green certificate, like the little card, like the peddlers, so that we know who's, who has approval and who doesn't?
Yeah.
No, we don't. If Howie, if somebody were, trustee were to ask, and he said he displayed, we would know one had to ask. Good idea.
Okay, okay, I can.
I'm in favor of that, if anybody else is.
Yes. We didn't vote out.
Well...
On the last one.
Yeah, we did.
I thought Howie and I were...
He seconded it.
I seconded it, we all...
Yeah, all in fa, all, and I think all in favor?
Aye. I just wanted, I just wanted to discuss.
He interjected with another subject. All right. Next on the, next on the list is Fair Parking Event Request by Helen Trombini, submitted by Joan Trombini, five fifty-seven, Seven Lakes North and West End, North Carolina. It's for fair parking, paid parking, on-premise of property owned by Trombini, seventy, seventy-eight Mulberry Street. This is a traditional site that is, that's always set up for parking. They do know that they have to go the event application, they do know that there's sign restrictions and et cetera, and there has to be approved by, did Joan, has Joan approved, seen this, to approve it?
Yeah, he's the one that told them to contact me.
Okay, very good. So as long as our zoning enforcement officer has approved it, I make a motion to accept Joan Trombini for fair parking.
There's two fair parking ones though.
And Hill.
Hill.
The Hill came in there.
Oh. Sorry, I don't see the one online for Hill.
Yeah, that has it.
Oh, here it is, I found it, never mind, apologize. Yeah, so the fair parking, this is the parking lot, Hill, Hill Parking, trying to get down to the application. Event application procedure. Company name, Hill Parking, I don't see the, the physical application signed by Harry Hill, but it...
It, maybe it, when it scanned, it only scanned one page, but it's, it's there.
Okay.
I've got the whole application.
All right.
Signed by him, plus the whole bar.
And, and John has, and our zoning enforcement officer has approved it?
This is when it started, the two, so...
Started, okay. All right, so I make a motion, I'll modify my, amend my motion to accept the Trombini and Hill fair parking applications for the Douglas County Fair.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain, so carry. Next one, countryside tours. Countryside tours, Hudson Valley Countryside Tours is pending. The application is submitted on behalf of Clay Dingman, Nineteen Elm Street and Redhook. Request is for pickup and drop-off of passengers at the municipal parking lot, East Market, in East Market Street in Reinbeck.
Is this an actual business?
It was, it sounds conceptual, like they're just gonna start something.
I'll read, I'll read the paragraph. At this time, we are uncertain of the company name, we're in discussion with our attorney and accountant to finalize this for the time being, can we use Hudson Valley Countryside Tours? And a letter, emails directed to our village clerk. Ms. Coon, you may remember that about ten days ago, we spoke briefly on the phone, you requested I provide a brief summary of our plans, which at that moment, I, I, is just a feasibility study. I'm considering forming a small touring company, it would depart and return to the village of Reinbeck, the tour would last approximately three to three and a half hours. We plan on visiting local and rural food and beverage farm establishments, the pending routes would focus on scenic landscape and historic sites. Our plan is to use a small bus, holding twenty-two people max. We are considering the municipal parking lot on East Market Street as a pickup and drop-off location. The bus would arrive approximately twenty to thirty minutes before departing, upon returning, we would offload for approximately ten minutes. This time, we are considering tours for the days of Friday afternoon, Saturday, mid-morning, and early afternoon.
They want to be in the lot.
They want to use the lot, they can't, but not a parking spot in the lot, just to pull into the lot. Our, our police sergeant, Sergeant Dunn, has a concern about blocking traffic during the drop-off, if it doesn't work out to be a good timing-wise and cause traffic congestion, which could be heavy on some, on weekend days there. That was his concern.
Yeah, I think it's a poor location for that, and also the, the passengers will be wanting to park in the lot, and then they won't even be here. And I think down by the swimming pool, or, you know, maybe the, I see the, these passenger buses at tops, way in the back, you know, they'd stay there for, or stand there for a little bit. But I think it's a real bad location for this person.
It's too congested.
Yeah.
So I want to go to discussion, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion on, on countryside tours to use the municipal lot. Second?
Second.
What was your motion, not to use the lot?
No, to use it, we second it, now we're gonna have discussion relative to using the lot. Trustee?
I'm with trustee, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't, it's conceptual, I don't, we would want to think of insurance and, and afraid of precedent, that we said, and Grant makes a great point, people could have to fall somewhere, twenty, thirty, you know, forty people, but I need to be here.
Do we want to think about using the lot back here?
From the turnaround, twenty-two passenger bus.
Yeah, with the fire stuff. I, I agree with you, guys, I think it's a good idea, good, good business, maybe we can, maybe we can steer into the high school parking lot. Yeah. Because nothing goes on up there on weekends, but that'd be up to him, not us.
Yeah, so I just, all right, so, all in, all in favor of approving countryside tours using the municipal lot, say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion, anyway, abstain, motion carry to oppose, or motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay. Next on the agenda. Workers' June, Workers' Justice Center Farmer's Market table.
Reinbeck Crew Porch Fest.
Come on, I'm on my way to that. Uh, they have Reinbeck Crew Porch Fest, so I skipped it. Building soliciting application for Reinbeck Crew Inc., a nonprofit 501(c) organization, submitted by Tom Palastra, Three Kitsburgan Drive in Reinbeck, New York. Porch Fest Hot Dog Stand, selling hot dogs, chips, soda, and bottled water. Reinbeck High School Crew, nonprofit organization that supports the, the crew team. I'm assuming this was vetted by Porch Fest?
They sent it because their hot dog person that they've had in the past is not coming this year, so they reached out, or somehow they got in touch with Reinbeck Crew, and Reinbeck Crew came to me.
I make a motion to approve the Reinbeck Crew Inc. for Porch Fest Hot Dog Stand, selling hot dog, chips, soda, and bottled water.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Next is now Worker Justice, Worker Justice Center for New York. We have a Peter Rosenblum, board member, five Jones Street, Reincliffe Building Table for Use July fifteenth to July twenty-ninth. Are the days open?
I believe so, because he has come in and checked with me. July fifteen is open, and so is July twenty-ninth.
And the request is to use a table in municipal parking lot, Farmer's Market, but it doesn't say... What for?
I asked him, I don't see a regular application. I asked him, and he said it's to, he's gonna, they're gonna hand out literature to educate the public on what the Worker Justice Center of New York is.
I, I found the letter here, do you want me to read the letter? I'm sorry, it's further down that he had sent.
Yeah, I have the letter, I'll have it.
Dear Board, I'm requesting permission to host a table in municipal parking lot during the Reinbeck Farmer's Market, July fifteenth and/or July twenty-ninth, on behalf of the Worker Justice Center for New York. The Worker Justice Center is a nonprofit organization that operates in the region with an office in Kingston, in addition to an office in Rochester. It's a legal service organization that provides free representation to low-wage workers involved in trafficking or exploitative labor. Is also involved in advocacy and organizing with low-wage workers, many of whom are migrants. The Worker Justice Center has an active presence on both sides of the river, I'm a new board member and a longtime contributor who lives in Reincliffe, I would staff the table personally. And pursue, the purpose of the table is to provide information for our neighbors and visitors to the region about the Worker, Worker's Justice Center, to time close size with a month-long fundraising drive. Which is attached, if everybody wants to read the detail, there's fundraising drive. I make a motion to approve, let me get back to the beginning here, so I know, just quote it, the Worker Justice Center of New York.
Second.
Any discussion?
One sec. I'm, I'm looking at the Farmer's Market, oh, it's two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, it's going to be eighteen.
Oh, right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yeah.
Second.
No, we seconded all, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
So these are first come, first served, basically.
Right. Well, they can't use, do we have a rule on consecutive use?
Yes.
I think, right?
Pardon me?
Sir, do we have a rule on consecutive use?
Two, two a month.
Yes.
They can do, I think they can do it consecutively, but it's two per month.
Okay, next, other business, no other business, moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Oh, there is, I didn't see it in the cloud.
Oh, it's in the, under the personnel section.
You...
The part time.
Yeah, it's under personnel, yeah. So we're, and minutes approval, how many minutes to approve, to six twelve?
Six twelve.
Six twelve eighteen minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from six twelve eighteen?
We approve the minutes.
A second?
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? So carry. Okay, correspondence. Pat?
We have...
Sorry. Do you have them?
Yeah, I have them, but I was trying to get on to the cloud, so I had them in the right order.
First one is the Anderson letter on the cloud.
Okay, so we've already basically covered the Anderson letter, so, then the next one would be, I can't get on to it.
Assessment notice?
Yep, from the town of Reinbeck, or the one, yeah, from the town of Reinbeck. As we begin our town-wide reassessment project, we will be conducting informational sessions for residents to attend in order to have a better understanding of the project that we are undertaking. The assessor's office is responsible for assessing property within the town and village as one assessing entity. These sessions are your opportunity to be informed and ask questions, we encourage people to attend, we believe that an informed public will be, make for a much smoother and extremely successful project. The sessions will be held at the town hall and be conducted by Title Technologies. Title Technologies is the company that the town has contracted with to complete our reassessment project. Staff from our assessor's office will be working hand-in-hand with Title Technologies throughout the project. At the informational sessions, we are expecting that residents will leave with a better understanding of the reassessment project. We will cover the assessment, reassessment timeline, the data collection project, process, the process that property owners can use to collect data or values, how values are determined, a review of frequently asked reassessment questions, and misconceptions about reassessment. The meeting dates that are currently scheduled are listed below, and our town and village websites will have a complete list of dates and times for these informational sessions. Tuesday, July ten, between five-thirty and seven-thirty at the town hall, and Saturday, July fourteen, ten o'clock at the town hall. We look forward to seeing you.
Ballinger letter.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I scanned it, but I must have...
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please, because I can't get on.
It's a long letter. July ten, twenty eighteen, Dear Mayor Bassett and Trustees, thank you for hosting the meeting last night. I am sorry we had to leave since it went on past the time we needed to be home. I want to raise some points to reiterate the short-term renters' side, since we are outnumbered, though it's a case that some of us couldn't be there, along with shopkeepers and restaurant owners who value the extra income. Number one, because I referred, because I was referred by several as a textbook case of how to rent, I would be glad to participate in the planning. I vet carefully each guest, since my house has valuable contents, including my Steinway baby grand piano, art, antiques, et cetera. I can explain that in detail. I never allow more than six for my four bedrooms and two and a half baths, I had the fire inspection and CO2 monitors, two forms of Egress, et cetera. cetera. Just ask, I will consider, come, or write out detailed list of what I do, and others should consider. I pay Dutchess County tax, so there is a record of how many nights I rent and what I pay. Number two, we renters are not charging, changing the character of the neighborhood with renting out 20 nights, or however many days you would permit. More second homeowners and unfriendly neighbors like I've had are however. You can't regulate who buys a home or whether people welcome neighbors. I've moved four to five times to new places, from New York, including 23 years in St. Louis, eight in Chicago, so I know how to welcome others and try to make friends, as I live in a village. Number three, I don't feel 14 nights is adequate. Why not go from 40 down to at least half or at least 20, which is reasonable, and not hurting others? Number four, the people who stay at my house are not having wild parties. I do not permit gatherings at all, except for those here. There are now cameras to show that I don't use any. I have had famous people here, clerks on the Supreme Court, wealthy hedge fund owners, et cetera. I don't allow in 20-somethings unless they sound very responsible. If you limit me to one to two bedrooms and three to four people, those prospective guests will go elsewhere to other villages. They often want to have their families here together to celebrate a parent's weekend, a graduation of card, or a 50th or 60th birthday party, all of which is often the case with my house, or the Sheevan Wool Festival, which is a big draw. Three to four bedrooms, I mean maximum six, is much fairer. Read the reviews from my guests at VRBO and see what they say about my house in Reinbeck. I don't think a rule, number five, I don't think the rule against consecutive weekends is fair. June was a big month for me. July means one weekend, and August so far is none. I rent perhaps 16 nights a year, or 18, and they are grouped together because of events and weather. Number six, change happens. Almost everyone who spoke up last night was older and didn't like the idea for the sake of the idea. These people probably don't like other changes in the village, more weekenders. Nobody cited a specific reason themselves, except for the, except the dark houses, which many weekenders and lack of children. Do you not insist people who move in have village, have school-aged children? Do we insist nobody goes to Florida for three months? Number seven, I too love this village, where I now have lived for eight years. I'm a writer, speaker, blogger, and often spoken in oblog books. The library, and soon will speak at, end the library, and will soon speak at the Dutch Reform Church about my last book. My writing income has gone, has gone, done, I do, down, due to publishing changes. I need to make some extra funds to maintain my lawn, house, and afford increasing taxes, et cetera. I find landscaped, I first landscaped in front of it as a public service for the village from a very public location. I care and would never do anything to hurt this gem of a town I've written about. The same holds for Kevin Curry and others on the committee. Finally, the 240 days on permission by landlords who live here, not in Red Hook or New York City, mostly is enforceable through gathering documents. It will help significantly maintain a character that's a net plus, so that enforcement needs can be more rigorous. Let's not try to enforce a lot of things that aren't if the renters' house is their main home. I and others are the people you want to rent. Then you eliminate all extraneous stuff that is non-forcible. Thanks so much for listening and planning slowly. Sincerely, Barbara Ballinger.
I do have the other two.
Hubert letter?
Yes. That was not the next, yeah. Troy Banks was the next one.
Uh, and then on files, Hubert, but.
Okay. All right, I'll do Hubert. Before you have scheduled town and village reassessment project information sessions, I need to know if the assessors and the assessment review board have fixed the terrible problems incurred a few years ago. I sent many letters to the town, village, and assessment officers dealing with the process people and procedures problems, and have never gotten a single reply from anyone over many months, except from the town attorney at the time. Do I, do I really, do I read this whole thing? Mayor Bassett?
Pardon me?
Do I read this whole letter?
This, this gentleman, by the way, mayor, was in attendance at the meeting this evening, the information meeting, and I could share, could help with his concerns and how the super town, the town supervisor responded.
I think it's appropriate. He wrote to us, but it's really a concern for the town and his interaction with the town.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of interaction between the town supervisor and Mr. Hubert already, in terms of trying to answer his question, so I would say, Pat, I think we could.
That's why I, that's why I stopped.
Say we received the letter.
Okay. And...
Unless, unless any of the board has an objection.
No, no, I don't think it's really our, right, our jurisdiction, whatever.
And the last one was Troy and Banks. It's a utility telecom audit information company. Thanks for your time on the phone today. As discussed, our auditors here at Troy and Banks have identified some problematic issues in regards to utility and telecom billing in your area. They have pulled up your files. Just, I contact you to update some documentation. You may likely be entitled to refunds or cost savings based on the recent findings. And it goes through, they would need one month's entire bill for each and every utility and telecommunications accounts paid by the village, which will include utilities outside the street lane, outside and street lighting, electric, gas, fuel, propane, telecommunications, landlines, and cell phones. The most recent bill for each, and one received within the last three months will be fine. And we've used them in the past. It's what they do. We give them the information, they go to the utility. There's forms that have to be filled out, so that they can proceed with the audits of the utility and telecommunications, as well as updated documents for your reference. And they do the research, and then if they get anything, they get a percentage of it. And we get some.
We use somebody else also for...
We, we do, the LED lights was one of those.
We did, we did the utility audit last year, for which we did receive our, for which we did find we were being overbilled, and we received a refund for.
Yes, we did.
So that, so the utility side, so the, at least the electrical side.
Oh, that's the streetlight part. That's just the streetlights.
That's just the streetlights, that's correct.
But we're, right.
This is not the...
Which is gonna change.
But this company would do it.
The street lighting issue's gonna change.
And we already did the audit of the buildings inside here, or buildings, except for the external buildings.
I have a real reservation with any providers that offer this type of service for a go-forward, almost, not almost a perpetuity, but a go-forward refund up to two years. So in other words, if there's a successful in locating and overbilling, we split that 50/50, and then we pay them 50% of the gross savings every month for the next two years.
Is that what this?
Yeah, that's the, that's the agreement that the previous administration had agreed to. And that's, and I know, because this is pretty much my industry, at least the telecom side, most clients will say, you know, there's the door. Because that's kind of asking a lie. If we're, if we're wanting to entertain this, you know, we should consider, you know, other providers, unless for some reason we haven't a very positive experience with these guys and...
I just know that they, the village has used them in the past outside, no idea.
And that's interesting.
That was a while ago.
Too. Well, it was, it was five years ago. You know, if you did it only five years ago, we shouldn't be needing another one, you know, now, you know, it's...
Yeah, like we had someone, we had that one company audit our cable franchise agreement, and they scrubbed it, and there would be no reason to do it again now, five years later.
Well, I would make a recommendation of how you just kindly reply and say thank you for your service, but we're gonna decline at this time. Can everyone be okay with that?
Yeah. And also, because we did talk about the workload, particularly that Pat, our village clerk carries, and this is gonna be intrusive, like, three pages.
Yeah, we have to... I think we got down covered. All right, so next is the personnel issue, right?
I didn't mean, you said that, and then I was agreeing.
Oh, yeah.
Which is the hiring, you know, the hiring for a part-time records clerk. If you remember, this is an advertisement that we, so this is for a month, how long ago? A month ago?
Mm-hmm.
Only a month ago. We did get two applicants through the school, and just to, I mean, our village clerk can give a much better definition of the job if you would like.
What we, originally it was to work at restocking once the basement part was going to new shelves and to re-categorize everything and re-box and put it on the shelves. And when we received the grant, it kind of dovetailed together, so that the person would be hired to, as part of the grant, to help itemize and index the documents that we need to submit for the grant. And I talked to the one provider yesterday or today as to what and how that would have to be done. So as time constraints and workloads, it was to hire this additional person at approximately 10 hours per week, and pay them a certain amount of money, and we could, well, we have a budget in that's in the grant, so that we could get this work done in the timeline that we need. So we received two applicants, Mayor Bassett and I interviewed both. We showed both candidates the, what is entailed, where they would be, and that's where we're at now, to make a decision as to.
Both are very qualified candidates. They both have time for the summer. They both have other commitments. One will be going back to school, and the other one is works in our, in the Reinbeck School District. If you've had a chance to review, Mary Ann Mostel lives on 631 Pumpkin Lane in Clinton Corners, has had various jobs, but will be heading back to school, has time. The second one is Deb Hiley, who lives here in the village on 26 Chester Street, Reinbeck, New York, and is, works in the library at the Reinbeck Central School District at present, and is currently has, except for either one of them having short times off or vacation, are available with flexible hours for the summer, for the summer months.
I would think that the library experience might lend itself well, Pat, when you talk about indexing and...
Yes. I'm, I have, I immediately thought the same. I'm concerned about time constraints that she may be able to offer because of commitments that she has outside, and, but she might be able to be more efficient in the time that she's here, so I...
They both felt capable of being able to accomplish the job within a period of time. We have, so it's...
I like the other resume from the woman on Pumpkin Lane, but...
I'm partial to the village.
Because of her, you know, because she lives in the village?
Yeah, so that's the only reason, I'm partial to the village. You're both highly qualified, and my only recommendation is for the porch.
Well, my, I would, you know, want to follow what Pat wants to do, because it's...
Oh.
Her area.
It has to get done. We have a certain length of time to get it done, and I think the woman, which is Deb Hiley, I think she'd be able to get it done, and I think she would understand it. And she, regarding, they'd be dealing with personnel records, payroll, they have all confidential records they'd be handling. Both are mature women. I'm, I'm still, I have reservations about the time.
Well, does she have another job there, or?
No, the town. They have a certain amount of hours that they have to get this done, and it might be intense days, and that was one. And then she does have other commitments that she wants to, you know, family commitments during the summer. I would suggest maybe to go in with Deb, because she is local, she is right here, and is village money, and is a village resident. Well, I guess that's my final, my final answer.
I mean, it does seem like they'd be, I mean, they'd be...
Right.
I mean, that's like, she, splitting hairs here.
Yeah, pretty much. Both are highly capable. I was very glad that we got the two to begin.
Excellent, excellent candidates, excellent candidates. They wouldn't go wrong.
Right.
Either way.
So follow up, Pat's.
I would defer to Pat as well.
Okay. I will contact Deb then tomorrow morning and tell her, and she could actually even get started as soon, as soon as possible.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to end our July 10th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstaining? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss union contract negotiations and some hiring situation for wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.